One Nation, Ambaral. Thank you. I'll... You'll read them or should I read them?
He's not here, Chairman.
Okay, so Terry, can you please read them the certification compliance?
Will do. The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the Bolton Board and in the office of Township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting, and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call. Mr. Grunberger. Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Hiberson.
Here.
Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Hertzel.
Here.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Fulman.
Here.
Mr. Sevrafos.
Here.
And Mr. Gorki.
Here. Okay, confirmation recording status. Terry, is it on?
It is, Chairman, thank you.
It's working, okay, thank you. Swearing of professionals?
Terry Swed. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the memorizations or resolutions.
All right. SB 2208.
Yeah, Terry, would you know, I was here, but do you know who was here on those four? You have the chart? Who can vote?
I could not tell you unfortunately.
Okay, so let's go with numbers. Hopefully, we all remember.
SB 2208 was Prospect Street Holdings preliminary final major subdivision, five lots on Blanche Street.
Do I have a motion? Okay, motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and an ayes no. Okay, approved. Number two.
Okay, the second one would be for SB 2231, Prospect Street Holdings, preliminary final major site plan for synagogue on Blanche Street.
Okay, motion? Motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any ayes no? Okay, motion approved.
The third resolution would be SB 2136, Yehoshua Franklin, denial of preliminary and final major site plan for a synagogue in Rabbi's Residence.
Okay, motion, move a motion. Second, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any ayes no? Motion approved.
And the final resolution would be SB 2245, Latin American Pentecostal Church of God, minor site plan for addition to an existing church.
Motion. All in favor? Aye, any ayes no? Motion approved.
And that would be it for the resolutions. Prior to the public meeting, I, Mr. Chairman, there is one administrative minor, Oak Street Court, SB 2303 AO. Ryan, I believe, you ready to give testimony on this?
Yes.
Is the regular Oak Street Court?
This is the Oak Street Court, correct.
Oak Street, the conforming line.
You've been hearing administrative minors.
I know, is there any variances?
There's no variance.
No relief, no relief. Completely conform. By right application.
Any questions, any board members? Do we have a motion? Okay, you have a motion, second?
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Grunberger. Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hiberson.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Fulman.
Yes.
Ms. Sevrafos.
Yes.
Mr. Gorki.
Yes.
Okay, we're now into the public portion.
Okay, the public portion. We have a big agenda tonight, I'd like to get through the whole agenda. Are there any changes to agenda? As far as I know, yeah. Adam Pfeffer, are you? Okay, number five has been carried. And...
Until what time? When would you like to?
For the next available meeting. I've spoken with Ms. Weinstein, she's representing with some objectives here, we're going to see if we can try and resolve some of the issues, so we're asking just for the next available meeting, I guess is the thirty-first?
I would recommend the thirty-first, there is a special meeting on the twenty-fifth, but it's questionable what's going to be heard, if anything.
And when's he coming back? When's he coming back?
If I could ask at this time, move to the thirty-first, we will try and see if we can resolve it, if not, if I can speak with my client and try, I don't have...
You're representing your client, no, Mrs. Weinstein?
This particular...
Client wants to be here.
Wants to be here and wants to be heard. I'm not going to say, what he told me is I'm not representing him and he wants to speak himself. I am representing a group of neighbors, this particular neighbor wants to be present.
Okay, so Mr. Jackson, what do you reckon? Can we move it to the thirty-first? We have to listen to the objective, what do we do?
Well, if it's going to be a contested thing, we might not finish, and he might have to send an attorney or have some, you know, I don't know who this objector is, he's not here.
He's here.
He can't make it on the thirty-first?
Well, it's actually, yeah, it was paid three times, it was pulled three times.
What's the issue on the thirty-first? You have prepaid vacation plans, or what's, why won't you be here?
We have scheduled tickets for either of them. I was paid three times, it was pulled three times, it was all came out then.
What are the circumstances? Where, what?
For all the new neighbors.
Where are you going? Vacation? Business? And you have prepaid tickets?
Yes.
Under the circumstances, he's been here, you should try to accommodate him.
Okay, so, can you agree with the, when is the next meeting?
The next meeting after the thirty-first.
Once, one at a time, please.
Folks, the next meeting after the thirty-first, per my calendar, is November twenty-first.
I'm sorry, what day were you doing?
On the twenty-fifth.
I was saying maybe just put it on the twenty-fifth, then.
You can clear on the twenty-fifth.
Exactly, I'm just trying to give it an opportunity, but again, I'm voicing, I mean, we would like to be on the thirty-first. If you heard Ms. Weinstein on the objector, it's up to you to vote.
Okay, so...
Do you consent to the...
My client wanted to be heard tonight, but based upon our conversation with Ms. Weinstein, I figured we would try, I recommended to him, let's try and resolve this, because of the fact that we were going to be, it would be heard on the thirty-first.
But what's the date we have?
The twenty-first.
So your choices, go forward tonight or November twenty-first? You consent to November twenty-first?
I thought it was Friday, but it's tonight, we were trying to defer this to the objectives.
You have to decide, you know, I want to know if I have your consent.
So at this point, this is number five, let me speak to my client, and wait, maybe I'll go forward tonight. At this point, I'm going to ask, if it's not going to be, I only have consent.
All right, we're using, we're very backed up, we're...
That's fine, well, wait.
Let us know what you want to do, we'll decide when we reach that point in the calendar.
That's fine.
Excuse me, Chairman, let the record show that Mr. Flansbrough and Mr. Renner walk in.
Okay, so let's put it on hold right now. Let's put it on hold.
Okay.
Okay, and number six, who's number six?
I'm sorry.
Number six asks to be carried without further notice to the meeting of the thirty-first.
You are going to renotice on that?
No, no new notice.
No new notice to the thirty-first?
Yes.
Okay.
Of October?
October thirty-first, yes.
Members publicly advised, SB 2279, the application order, Icorn, has been adjourned and will be heard on this October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, six o'clock this evening, although we have no further notice.
Okay. Okay, so, number one.
Okay, the first item on the agenda, Chairman, is SB 2240, Lakewood Business LLC. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer.
One second, I usually give Terry first.
I know, I was trying to tell Terry to double duty, I was trying to help him out.
You helped him out, okay, that's okay.
Go ahead, Adam Pfeffer, Chairman of the applicant, I know you have a full schedule tonight, and try to move his money.
I'm sorry, for the record, I'm going to recuse myself in this application.
Let the record, Flankner Flansbrough stepped down.
Which one?
The twenty-two forty.
This application that we're coming before the board is for an additional warehouse building located in the M1 industrial zone. Some of the members of the board may be familiar with this, we were before the board a couple years ago for another building that's on the same site, they're an actual couple lots. The application site is a fully conforming application, the only variance is listed, and it's not a variance, was for a setback, but because Industrial Commission has signed off on it, which they have the right to do, and they've granted it, so we have no variances.
It's complicated, if I can segue, Chairman, just going through what we have on the record, really very similar, just want to note that there's a submission waiver required for EIS, the site's developed and there's no known constraints, so we support that waiver.
So, any other waivers?
That's the only submission waiver.
Do we have a motion to grant the waiver?
Over.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any ayes no?
And then under zoning, there are no bulk variances, with the exception of the front yard setback issue, which is a hundred feet unless you have Industrial Commission approval. It's your testimony, Adam, that you have that approval?
Yes, I did the letter, it should be in the board's file, that they have, they have their problem with that.
All right, then, based upon that approval existing, you can make that part of the record, I assume, John?
Yes.
There are no variance conditions, there's one design waiver left, which is street trees along the site frontage, a waiver's necessary, again, within the industrial areas, you typically don't have that, but that is something the board will have to act on.
Right. Yeah, I'll get it to Swed in a minute, just with regard to the review letters, make this really quick.
You agree to everything?
We agree, except for when I, with regard to the shade tree, he's been along Cross Street, we can't do trees on cross, because we met with the county, the county's looking to do some widening, we just, because we cannot comply with that. Otherwise, there's already some buffering going on there, so there's not much more that we could actually do. I'll let Mr. Hopkin just be sworn in, and he can confirm everything that we said.
So, if I understand, that's a justification of the waiver, for reason why, all right, correct.
Okay, and besides that, you agree to everything in the report?
Besides that, we have no objection, I just want to do point out, I know Mr. Flanery asked, there's a note regarding trash enclosures that have been shown, and again, this was before the board on a previous application, these are smaller spaces, so what happens is they're all individual trash with each tenant, they call, they get their collection, they bring them out, they're picked up, and actually, we had approved last time, and we had to come back before the board to clarify that, and the board had no problem with that. If I can just swear in, Mr. Hopkin?
Do you swear from testimony, give before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And just to confirm, this is before the board, is accepted as an expert?
Walter Hopkin?
If I can just ask, if you just mark the two exhibits that we have?
You're an expert in, you're licensed in engineering and planning, or?
Yes, sir, licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure we had your...
Testify before this, Walter, right?
Yes, all right.
I'll mark them as A1, and the two, ten is on the table.
So A1 is a color rendered version of the plans submitted to the board, prepared by this office, last revised July twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, and A2 would be a color rendered version of the architectural elevations of the plan, prepared by the applicant.
Color?
A little color, a little bit.
Mr. Hopkin, you heard my opening statement, and the board's engineer, is there anything you can add to that, or is what we've indicated, we put on the record, is that confirmed?
Absolutely, if there's any other questions that the board may have with regard to the site, the only thing I do want to clarify is there is a request, I don't believe it's a waiver, but a request from Mr. Vogt's office with regard to perimeter buffering, it's our opinion that perimeter buffering does not suit this site, as you can see, to the west and to the east, there's significant heavy commercial activity and asphalt, and to the rear is also a parking lot, so we just don't feel that additional buffering would be applicable to this site.
Which comment are you talking about, Will? Are you talking about landscaping, that comment fifteen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so...
And foundation plantings aren't, because of the nature of the design of the site, which is similar to what's there existing, there is no opportunity for foundation plantings.
So you're seeking relief of essentially the recommendations of the shade tree commission, which are in our letter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, we are okay with the balance of...
The rest of the letter, we can comply.
Any questions for any board members? Seeing no, we love to...
What's the use of the current building?
It's a flex space, so they have the various tenants with a small amount of office, and...
The current building is also flex space?
Excuse me?
Yeah, both the current building and the new proposed building are both flex space, so it's like a warehouse with a office.
Yes, sir.
And all the parking, I see it's going to be around the new building, right?
We do have new parking around the new building, and we're also adding an additional parking lot with the spaces available to the other buildings as well.
How many total parking spaces do you have?
Hundred ninety-eight...
Hundred ninety-eight spaces.
Correct.
And what's required?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
Why so many, then?
To add to the existing site, the existing site complies, but appears that there may be some additional required, so we had the area, the stone mortar management's been designed for it, so we added the parking. It's unusual that there's too much parking.
Is the only office area, the small office area, that's shown on the plan?
In the architecturals? Yes, yes, sir.
Because it seems to be excessive amount of parking for just that small office, that's why.
It's warehousing, that paperwork, that's...
That's what they say, whether they're using a whole building as an office.
But we're not using the whole building as office, it's flex warehouse space, it's not office space, it's not, right, board, it's not...
It's just fun to check and make sure.
It's on the record, and again, I know everyone gets a little skeptical when we add more parking, we use a rest for parking variances, but again, we have almost four times the required amount of parking, and it's just because it makes it easier for us to rent it out.
If there was office space, if there was office space, how many parking spots would you need then? Approximately, meaning are you within reason with your parking, if it was?
Would you be conforming?
I guess the question, the question, I don't know if the engineer can figure out what the amount, if you give him a minute, he's going to figure it out.
Okay, no problem.
And again, a testimony that this is not office space, it's flex warehouse space with a small office for each...
Approximately a hundred thirty-five spaces would be required, off the top of my head, Mr. Vogt, I was using one space for two fifty square feet, would give us a hundred thirty-five spaces required.
Hundred ninety-eight required.
You conform, even if you would make it to offices?
Yes, yes.
Okay, no problem. Okay, thank you very much.
But that being said, Chairman, it's our understanding that any change of use, if this is approved, would have to come back to the board, is that understood?
Okay. You agree with that?
There's a flex office warehouse space.
Well, what does the change of use mean? Does that mean if you change it from warehouse and office as designated to all office that you come back, or does that mean, you know, I don't know what you mean, because you're saying it's flex space. Exactly what do you want approval for, and what would trigger them having to come back?
My client was indicating, it's not going to be built as offices, no air conditioning, there's no, there's no air conditioning, there's no heating, it's warehouse space.
Okay.
All right, so if it were to be changed from use as warehouse space, you'd require amended site plan approval from the board?
That's correct, yeah, the only office is going to be, one is shown on the plans, which is small, usually one or two people who run that space.
Okay.
And I guess there's three other buildings, there's two that are built already and one to improve.
There are four other buildings, but these two, this, this one, they're starting to build now, and this one was approved and hasn't been built yet.
And all those are, they're all flex spaces?
Yes.
All the same?
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public, let me hear on this application, please come forward. Seeing no, we'll close it, I probably. I'd like to make a motion in this application. Okay, Mr. Fulman moves, you have a second? Mr. Hiberson seconds, roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Grunberger. Mr. Franklin. Mr. Hiberson. Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner. Mr. Fulman. Ms. Sevrafos. Mr. Gorki.
Okay, motion approved, thank you. Okay. Okay, number two.
Number two is SB 2188, ask for a reminder of subvention.
Okay, Mr. Hiberson is stepping down, let the record, let the...
I'm sorry, Chairman?
Mr. Hiberson is stepping down on this application. Number two, Alan Spurva, can you vote? And Mr. Renner is stepping down, too?
He's in downtime, in between applications, I think.
Okay. Where's Mr. Flansbrough? Can you sit on number two? Alan Spurva? Okay, so Mr. Renner, Mr. Hiberson step down. Okay. Okay, Terry.
This is an application with variances. I may summarize, for page three of our letter, variance appears to be required for minimum side yard setback for proposed lots seven point oh-one and seven point oh-three, is that the only relief, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, Chairman of the applicant, I am Brian Flanery, addressing a technical question, the account is under the spirit of Flanery, and...
Do you swear from testimony, give before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Let me finish swearing the witness, please. Do you swear from testimony, give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, Brian Flanery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner.
Recognize...
We recognize Mr. Flanery, yes.
Please, recognize counsel, wants to put something on the record?
Yes. Just take your name to record, please.
Susan Di Maria, Melissia McAlini, we represent Harrogate.
Speak into the mic, please, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I would like an opportunity to have my planner talk about jurisdiction, just as a preliminary thing, so that we can make our record.
Can you tell us what the issue is with jurisdiction?
She can explain.
Well, I don't want to go out of order, but if, I want to nip this in the bud if there's a jurisdictional issue, so counsel, you can't just give us an offer of proof on what the issue is?
This is maybe my own, before the application, because what we put on record, we haven't even put it in the study yet, and they're telling us we're on jurisdiction.
Well, I know, but it might be from the notice, it might be because they think it's a D variance, I just want to know...
Anything that I hear, both respect, once we start, they didn't say that, we're going to dispute that, and in the end, we're going to...
I just want, I just want to know the nature of it, counsel can't tell me, ma'am...
No, it is, it is a contention that it needs to be narrowed.
What's the contention based on?
I would like Ms. Dylan to explain it to you, she's a planner, it's...
So what, what happened? What happened?
All right, that'll be party proofs, let them go, and then, party proofs will be addressed what the use is and why you believe it's conforming in the zone, then the objector can proceed.
Okay.
Okay, but just so that it's clear, we're not waiving that objection.
Of course.
Okay.
Okay.
Brian, if you can, just mark the two exhibits that we have.
Mr. Flanery, initially, what use are you seeking approval for? What is it?
Multifamily residential.
And can you just briefly tell the board, why do you believe that this is approved, or that permitted in the zone?
Well, property's located in B5A zone, section eighteen nine oh-three F, under permitted uses, B, residential, multifamily residential, which may include two-family and duplex housing, it goes on in two, under design regulations, to say multifamily dwellings shall be permitted in accordance with standards set for military, multifamily dwellings located in B2 zone to all criteria except density, the maximum density for multifamily dwellings shall be limited to seventeen units per acre. And then, I mean, if we're going to stick on this topic, we should turn to the definition of multifamily dwelling in section eighteen, page two-one-two, multifamily dwelling, two more dwelling units located within a single building with a private entrance to each dwelling unit, the application clearly fits that, so we're clearly multifamily dwellings, it says multifamily in accordance with the B2, so that's section eighteen nine oh-three B, and in that section, under permitted uses, it says all uses permitted in the B1 zone and R M zones, and then it goes on to list the design regulations for multifamily dwellings, and as Terry's report points out, the one thing that we're asking for relief on is side yard setback, where twenty feet is required, and we're asking for twelve.
That's the only variance that you're asking for?
That is correct.
All right, I want to just interrupt you for a moment, Mr. Vogt, in your review letter under zoning, you indicate multifamily dwellings shall be permitted, and you seem to indicate in your review letter that this is a permitted use in the zone.
That is correct.
Did you hear, did you hear Mr. Flanery's notes?
I heard Mr. Flanery's.
Okay, so obviously not for closing that, we're going to keep an open mind on that issue, so the objector is heard, to see what their argument is, but the board satisfied with that at this stage.
Terry right now agrees with the...
Correct, you're satisfied, okay, so we'll hear what the objector says when we get to that point, but please continue with your application.
So, so these are multifamily dwellings in accordance with the ordinance, they're a specific type of multifamily dwelling, which we're calling as a triplex, instead of a duplex, it's three units, and it's suited to the piece of property, the property's located on Locust Street, if you look on Terry's report, as indicated, he indicates it's a multifamily residential, a permitted use, and he lists the variance that's required, which I've indicated, a minimum side yard setback, and typically for a bigger job, twenty feet would make sense on each side, this is a very small, a triplex is very similar to a duplex, which would have smaller side yard, but we acknowledge we need a side yard setback, we're asking for twelve feet instead of twenty, and this is a C2 variance, where we need to show that the benefits outweigh the detriments. Certainly, the development in the area, this would fit in well, nobody driving down Locust Street is going to look at that and say, oh, these should be twenty feet size instead of ten, a triplex is a very small type of development, and it provides adequate yards, adequate light air and open space. If you look at the master plan of two thousand and seven, which hopefully is going to be changed pretty soon, and updated, on page thirty-five, under housing, it says, there's been a tremendous residential growth in Lakewood in recent years, and this trend shows no sign of abating, and many of the recent planning board applications in the townships are for developments of six to eight minutes per acre, the Unified Development Order permits lake lots, and then it concludes, for all this growth, however, not all of Lakewood's housing needs are met. So this does provide additional housing opportunities, on page fifty-six of the same report, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles, and it's my testimony that this is based on smart growth planning principles, it's consistent with the smart growth plan that was adopted by the town, when you look at the municipal land use law, NJSA forty colon fifty-five B2 under the purpose of the Act, it says to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands and estate in a manner which will promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare, and it's my testimony that this does that, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities concentrations that will contribute to the well-being neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment, and again, it's my testimony that this does that. So for a C2 variance, we have to show that it relates to a specific piece of property, and this clearly is an area in the B5A, it's a small piece of property, that needs a development that's appropriate for it, and it's my testimony that is this, we have to show the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced, which is what I just gave you, we have to show that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to public good, which would be an effect on the surrounding properties, the property will have sufficient parking, it's going to have sufficient buffering, it's going to have area, light air and open space, so it's my testimony that does that, we have to show the variance will not impair the Uh, we have to show the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the, of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and it's consistent with the zone plan and zoning ordinance, so it certainly doesn't do that. And, and so, in, in balance, you have to show that the benefits outweigh the detriments, and my testimony is that there is no detriment, and the benefits are the housing opportunities and, and growth in accordance with the smart growth plan.
How many properties do you have for each house?
Four for each house.
You have four for each house?
Yes. Uh, so, continuing in, in Terry's report, uh, uh, the, the other items, we, we would agree to satisfy, uh, all of his concerns. Uh, he, he had a concern with the, the turnaround, and we can certainly back him, and make him a little smaller and do something different that, that we would provide. The turnaround satisfied his, uh, comment on that.
The, the property is a foot and a half off the property line. Correct?
Yes.
So, you can't get any along the side?
Correct. We, we, we can't have any plantings along the side there. You, you see, there is a setback between the buildings and the parking, so we'll have foundation planting, we'll have plantings on, on the side. But the, the relief that we're requesting is for the, uh, the side setback to the house, nothing with respect to the parking. The parking is permitted, as shown.
Is no variance popping so close to the property line?
No.
It's legal to go up to the property?
Yeah.
In that area?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for any board members, Mr. Flannery? Okay, see no one? We'll hook up to the planner. What's your name?
Yeah, let me explain why I would like to move on.
One second, it's not up to the public.
You want to, uh, we're, we're going to hear the objection from, uh, Harrogate.
Objection.
You want to, uh, put your case on now?
Whatever.
Well, you have any, well, do you have any questions for Mr. Flannery first?
I just have, um, one. How many bedrooms are going to be used in this room?
They will be the normal five to six bedroom units. The basement, the applicant's not proposing anything, but we would expect the basements to be, uh, utilized, uh, as other basements in Lakewood are, and, and the Lakewood ordinance does allow rentable, uh, units in the basement.
Does any other members of the audience have any questions for the applicant's expert, Mr. Flannery? Questions? You'll have an opportunity to comment at that part of the case. There being none, um, we, uh, sorry, you'll have your chance to make your comments, but, uh, do you have any other elements of your case?
That's your case.
That's your case?
Okay.
All right, so, Harrogate want to put on its case then?
Yes, we do.
Please just speak into the mic.
Right, right, right. Uh, good evening. My name is Susan Di Maria. I represent Harrogate, uh, which is a neighbor to the project. As I had said initially, we have an objection to jurisdiction. Um, before we get farther into the case, I would like to have my planner's form, so that she can put that on the record.
Please swear your right hand. Do you swear in front of testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name and, uh, your credentials.
Yes. Um, my name is Barbara Allen, A L L E N Woolley hyphen Dillon, W O O L L E Y hyphen D I L L O N. Um, as far as my credentials, I am a licensed planner, first and foremost, in the state of New Jersey. I have my NJPP, which is the New Jersey Professional Planner's License, as well as my AICP, American Institute of Certified Planners. If you are only a planner in the state of New Jersey, you have to have successfully passed and obtained your AICP license. So, I do have both. Um, I am also, uh, in addition to being self-employed, I am currently the zoning official for the borough of Mantleloke. I am not here in that capacity. I'm testifying, uh, for my own private company. Excuse me.
Do you rec, Mr. Chairman, do you recognize, uh, Ms. Woolley and Allen Woolley?
You have testified on the boards?
Oh, absolutely. I've testified, uh, getting close to eighty boards here in Ocean County. I think every single municipality in Cape May County, and working my way up.
Okay, no problem. So, please proceed.
Thank you.
You, she was sworn in already? Yeah, okay, so, please proceed.
Um, still impeded? Could the board the benefit of the documents that you've been reviewing, preparation for the test?
Yes. I reviewed not only the zoning ordinance, but, um, current versions of the master plan that are in place, as well as the proposed changes. I've been through some of your meetings that are, uh, coming in for the most recent changes, um, even based on the September two thousand and seventeen meeting, as well as, um, the municipal land use law and relevant case law.
Now, as a result of your review, have you formed an opinion as to whether this application is in front of the proper board?
Yes, I have.
Can you give the board the benefit of your analysis, please?
Yes. I, I actually think that there's, I think there's a jurisdictional issue. I think that this, it's in front of the wrong board. Only the planning board can hear variances that do not require D-type variances. There are six of them. I actually say seven that are specifically mentioned in the municipal land use law. The first one involves two parts. It's what we call D, I call it D one, A and B. The D one variance is for a use or type of structure not permitted. Then there are others that follow through, down through density, uh, et cetera. And I believe, I, I heard Mr. Flannery's reading of the ordinance, but I, I think there are other parts to the definition for multifamily that he's missing that are referred to in other sections of the ordinance. I don't think that this qualifies as multifamily.
Ms. Allen Woolley, can...
Yes.
Just, can you simplify this? What's the gist?
Okay.
I, I do want you to get into the details, but so that we know what we're looking at. What, what is the gist of, of the issue?
Here's the deal. The way your ordinance looks at housing, multifamily housing, there are specifically two sections that refer to it being connected horizontally and vertically located on the same lot. This doesn't do that. Three separate lots. It's not on one lot.
So, so, let me just understand this. In your view, in order for you to meet the definition of multifamily, the properties have to be vertically or horizontally connected?
As well as being on one lot, yes.
And on one lot.
That's correct.
So, that would be like a conventional condominium or apartment or, uh, townhome development?
Absolutely.
What does that say in the ordinance, which ordinance?
Yes, let's, let's point, but, but...
Put it on the record.
We'll go through that very quickly. Um, there are two sections that specifically refer to this. Uh, section eighteen nine oh two, um, it's under, it's listed under the B R forty requirements, but it says, under number seven, planned affordable residential development, dwelling types, small letter A. One lists the townhouse, two lists the duplex, three, multifamily, a building containing multiple dwelling units other than a townhouse that are attached both vertically and horizontally. And then it goes on to say, with each unit having a separate exterior entrance or access from a common hallway. You continue further back?
Excuse me, ma'am. Did you just say that what you're reading is from the R forty's app?
This is what it, it's coming from the, um, I believe, under section B, the R forty. Yes. And then, if you go back to, um, again, it's that same section. Also, there's another section that talks about the zero lot line residential development. That's a section eighteen dash nine eleven, uh, capital letter B. It says, uh, reading through it basically, the provisions of the article are intended to serve as conditions required for approval of zero lot line residential dwelling as they may be permitted in the R ten, R seven point five, R M, B one, and B two zoning districts. It is not intended that this article apply to townhouse develop, developments, excuse me, involving no side yard setbacks on either side or condominium type developments. I believe it's pretty clear, uh, that this is not multifamily. It's townhouse. Townhouse is neither permitted as a stated permitted use or as a conditionally permitted use.
Can I stop you for one moment? Is there anywhere in the ordinance that you have found that, other than that, that defines multifamily?
Other than the one that, uh, Mr. Flannery has cited, uh, no. And I think that this is a very specific reference. The other thing that I would also use to support my argument is...
Just one second, please. Terry, multifamily in all zones should, are the same or not all? Like an R forty multifamily is legal?
There's different, there's different...
Definitions for multifamily?
By, by zone. I, I don't have them, them memorized or anything. I'm trying to make sense of what I'm hearing.
Okay, no problem.
I can tell you experientially, this is consistent with what has been interpreted as multifamily residential in my nine years.
Okay.
So, we're actually located in the B five A zone.
That's correct.
So, the definition you read, I think you said into...
From R forty.
From R forty.
That's correct.
And it also said something about an affordable, uh...
It refers to affordable housing, which...
So, is, is that specific, that, when you read that to me, it sounded like that might have been specific to affordable housing?
It may be. The, the other problem that I have with this is, what is multifamily housing? If there's no specific definition, we as planners commonly go to something else that we use. Hold on. This is the third iteration of it. It's called the, I believe this one is called the Complete Illustrated Book of Development Definition. It used to be called the newest, the latest. This is the third version of this printing. I have some handouts if the board would like to take a look at this.
Before you get into that, I just, uh, would like, uh, with your, just to keep things moving on, I'd like to ask Mr. Flannery. Mr. Flannery is, uh, where do you draw the definition of multifamily that fits this zone? If you could just identify that.
I did the, uh, definition section of the ordinance, which I read.
Isn't that also the B five section, Brian?
No, this is the beginning of the ordinance.
The general definition section.
General definitions.
So, this would apply to everything unless otherwise excluded. That's your provision.
And, and it clearly says two or more dwelling units located within a single building with private entrance to each dwelling.
Which, which definition are you reading, Brian?
I'm, I'm reading, uh, from the, the general definition in the beginning of the ordinance.
Chapter versus, so, Mr. wants to find it.
Chapter eighteen, section two hundred.
Okay. Which is the definition section? Is there a heading as to what you're reading? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find what, what you're reading.
It was under dwelling.
Dwelling, so...
Dwelling, yes. Okay, he has two left. Dwelling, and then had subcategories.
And you have townhouse, state, is that what you have?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm going with the multifamily dwelling.
Okay, all right, okay.
I understand the board's questions, but is someone wasn't done?
I, I agree with that, and I, I just want to... I, I agree with, now, I'm going to move on to Mr. Flannery. I just want to understand, because, because your, your planner, um, said that there's no definition that applies to this. So, before we go on, I, I figured Mr. Flannery would point us to a definition that he believes applies. And, and it appears that he's done that. And I, I have one other question for Mr. Flannery. In the B five A, um, does it have anything specific about multifamily that would take it outside the general definition, like apparently the R forty does?
It, no, it does not. What it does is it references the B two zone.
Correct.
And, and I read from the B two zone as well.
Thank you. Ms. Allen Woolley...
And that's a reference in our letter.
All right, I'd like to go back to Ms. Allen Woolley. You heard what Mr. Flannery said. He pointed to the general definitions. He gives a, uh, you know, citation that he says it's basically two or more units on one lot. And why would that not be, uh, where we would look?
I, I don't agree with him, and, and we as planners are entitled to disagree with each other. The conventional definition for multifamily, as I started to explain. If, if there's something that's not a clear picture, something that I need more definition, and, and I've often referred to this book recently. I tried to find a definition for yacht club in here.
All right, I appreciate you're looking through outside source, but we appear to have a section in our ordinance that specifically reads, defines multifamily. Why, why would that, that definition apply? You indicated, you looked to that book when you don't have anything that clearly, uh, applies. We have a, uh, ordinance that gives a definition of multifamily. We have a section that says multifamily is allowed. To me, basic fundamentals are, we would look for the general definitions, and it seems to be defined. Why is that not a correct pathway?
I think the definition that she said was from R forty.
And, and possible like a, uh, affordable housing type. But, I, I want to know why that definition that Mr. Flannery addressed would not apply.
I wanted to understand exactly what multifamily is. I wanted to understand what it looks like, what it functions as, et cetera. I went to this book, because you have two different things going on. I wanted to understand, to me, this is townhouse development. That's not multifamily. Townhouse is pierced by a vertical wall. Your ordinance has a specific definition for townhouse. To me, this is not multifamily. This is townhouse. So, the thing that I went to for clarification is the industry standard that we typically use for when we're looking for either a visual, et cetera. One of the things, um, that there is given a definition for is, it has all of the different kinds of dwelling units in. And I copied the relevant pages. I believe that we're going to do a handout to the board for the board to take a look at this. If you go to page one sixty-seven of the book, it talks about what is dwelling multifamily? Says a building containing three or more dwelling units, including units that are...
Just one second, please. Terry, do you know this book? That she's referring to?
Personally familiar with the reference.
Is that a recognized book?
With all, I, I'm sure it is. I'm not going to question it's not. I just want to clarify something.
So, one second, please, Terry.
I'm looking at the same code, and I, I'm making this comment, uh, to the objectors professionals, as well as Mr. Flannery, wherever you have cases back there. The same section of the UDO, we're talking about the definition of a multifamily dwelling. There is another section which refers to a townhouse, and it gives specifics as to a townhouse. Now, this may or may not meet the strict definition of a townhouse. However, at the end of this definition, it says, any unit of, any unit in excess of two units that does not meet the townhouse definition shall be considered a multifamily dwelling. Therefore, my interpretation of the UDO, based on what I'm reading, is, either it's a multifamily dwelling that is also a townhouse, or it does not meet the strict townhouse. By default, it's a multifamily dwelling. Is this a townhouse, what we have in front of us? This is the definition of a townhouse. A dwelling which is designed for and occupied exclusively as the residence of one housekeeping unit that is attached by means of one or more common firewalls to two or more other townhouse dwellings in the same building, and each townhouse is intended for occupancy by one housekeeping unit. Townhouse dwellings may not have any other dwellings above or below within the same building. Townhouse buildings must exclusively consist of, consist of units that do not have any other dwellings above or below. Now, Brian, this is a yes, no question. You're not using that definition. I'm assuming you're not seeking the reliance of this meeting, the Lakewood definition of a townhouse.
That is correct.
All right. Based upon that, I again go to the concluding statement in the UDO definition of a townhouse. Any unit in excess of two units that does not meet the quote, "townhouse definition" shall be considered a multifamily dwelling. Am I reading that correct?
Correct.
So, John, there's...
But let me understand something. So, if this is a townhouse, it's, it's not permitted?
If there's a townhouse, by definition, it would be the townhouse.
So, if it's, but if this, if this configuration is a townhouse, it's not allowed?
Mr. Flannery, does this meet what townhouse definition?
I would, I would disagree.
One, one at a time, one at a time.
I just want to understand that.
It... Mr. Fl, I was asking Brian, does, does the proposed dwelling, does this meet the definition of a townhouse per Lakewood UDO definition?
Well, I, I wanted to ask John's question, that if it's a townhouse, does that mean it's not multifamily? And my answer is no. A townhouse is a specific type of multifamily, and the ordinance allows townhouses in some places where it doesn't allow multifamily. Multifamily can be out, multifamily can be a lot of things. So, there are zones that allow multifamily and townhouses, and there are zones that allow just townhouses where they wouldn't want different types of multifamily. allow just townhouses where they wouldn't want different types of multifamily. This clearly meets the definition of a multifamily.
But here's the question. If it's a townhouse, if it's a straight-up townhouse, is it permitted in this zone?
Well, a townhouse is a multifamily, so it would be permitted in the zone.
Through the chair, I have a question for Terry.
I want Terry to... I'm sorry.
I have a question for Terry.
Yes.
Terry, going back to eighteen dash two hundred, I think it said multifamily was two or only on one lot, right?
It says here multifamily, two or more dwelling units located within a single building with a private entrance to each dwelling unit.
Okay, I thought somebody, maybe it was the objector, didn't you say something about how it was on one lot? Was that from the other book that you were referring to?
No, that's actually, when you're dealing with the, going back to the definition that's specifically listed under the residential dwelling districts, the ER40, where that's what it's talking about, and it's an implication that it is on one lot, because they're both attached vertically and horizontally.
But that's in the R40 section.
Yeah, okay.
Right, okay.
I'm still confused. If the townhouses recognize a specific type of housing, and it's permitted in certain zones, but not all zones, it sounds to me like townhouses are not permitted in this zone.
It's not a townhouse, it's a multifamily.
Well, that's the next question.
Okay.
Because I want to then determine whether it's a townhouse.
And Terry testified.
Because I don't think you could just ignore if it is actually a townhouse.
Terry testified that it's not a townhouse.
The UDO has a specific definition of what it considers a townhouse.
Yes, and if you want to take the advantages of the townhouse provisions, you need to meet the definition of a townhouse.
Correct.
If you don't want to take advantage of the townhouse provisions, you do multifamily.
So that goes to my question. Are there zones where townhouses are prohibited?
There's zones where townhouses are not listed as a permitted use.
Which is one, which is this one?
Townhouses are not permitted as a permitted use in this zone.
Right, so then, wouldn't it follow that if this is in fact a townhouse, then it's not permitted here?
No, because there's no reason to list townhouses as a permitted use if multifamily is permitted, and this is the way the board has interpreted this in the past, because if multifamily is permitted, it permits townhouses, and they don't give special rules.
I'm just trying to understand, because what was done in the past doesn't necessarily mean that someone's bringing up a point we haven't looked at. So I'm trying to get my head around, is there a place where townhouses are not permitted in the list of permitted uses? It sounds like this is one.
Yes.
So the question then is, is this a townhouse? Is there a specific type of housing that this falls up squarely that it's a townhouse?
Well, a townhouse is a type of multifamily.
Are all townhouses multifamily?
We're asking for multifamily residential, and this meets the definition of multifamily residential.
Brian, what would be the difference between multifamily and a townhouse? I'm not sure.
Well, townhouse is a specific type of multifamily. It's just like if you went into the cat family. You can have a lion, you can have a tiger, they're all in the cat family, but a lion isn't a tiger.
If this would be a townhouse, would you get more density? Would you get smaller houses? Bigger houses, what would you get?
In this particular zone, they said multifamily at seventeen units per acre. So you get seventeen units per acre, whether you have condominiums, whether you have duplexes, whether you have townhouses, whether you have any form of multifamily, you're allowed seventeen units per acre.
So your testimony is no difference between a townhouse and a multifamily in the B5 zone?
In the B5A zone, yes.
B5A zone, I'm sorry.
What I'm trying to figure out is why were townhouses not listed for it? And is this a townhouse? I thought from what Mr. Vogt read, the board's going to have to decide if this is a townhouse or not.
That's the question. Directly right on the...
What I understood from Mr. Vogt, that this is not a townhouse, it's multifamily.
I'm seeking confirmation as to there is a very specific definition in the UDO.
Let's see if we check the box.
That either meets all these points, or it doesn't. If it does not meet all the points, then the way I read this definition is that this particular dwelling will default to the multifamily dwelling definition.
Can we read the definition of a townhouse? What's a townhouse?
Okay, I'm going to read it again. Okay, one at a time. This is subsection B, townhouse. It says, "A dwelling which is designed for and occupied exclusively as the residence of one housekeeping unit."
Wait, wait, residence of one housekeeping unit?
That's requirement one. Number two, "That is attached by means of one or more common firewalls to two or more other townhouse dwellings in the same building, and each townhouse is intended for occupancy by one housekeeping unit."
Okay, so, does it meet, does it meet that, does it meet number one? Yes.
No, it doesn't. Because it can have rentable basements.
That's what I'm saying.
Because rentable basements are everywhere, though.
Right, I mean, your rentable basement is generally...
Which is why this would not meet this definition, which is why it would default to multifamily residential.
A townhouse is not...
Then there is no townhouse, then we have no townhouses in Lakewood.
Right. If you take, if you put the rentable basement into the equation, since they're allowed everywhere, why have a townhouse designation? It's not that, I think it meets it.
That's what I asked before, is that, is there any difference between building a townhouse or building a multifamily?
A townhouse, traditionally, you have units and firewalls, which you do here. The difference is here, the majority of the time is not only do you have the primary occupancy, you have a secondary basement on this. So that would be a deviation from this definition.
And what about townhouses in Lakewood, basements on the unit?
Regular townhouse and base, in Lakewood, unless specifically restricted, it's my experience that most aren't ER occupant.
So technically, it's the same thing, a townhouse, multifamily?
Chairman, I'm reading what was written.
I know, I appreciate it, thank you.
I would say like this, you know, from logic in college, all townhouses are multifamilies, but not all multifamily are townhouses.
Or what?
Because there's a more narrow definition for what a townhouse is than what multifamily is. But according to the definition of multifamily, it's a townhouse. But you drill it, narrow it down, a narrower form of multifamily is townhouse, just like I assume a narrower form would be condominiums. Condominiums, by definition, might have a unit above, three stories above, so not connected by walls, one different property.
So if these units end up having rentable basements, right, then they're no longer townhouses. But if they, but if the homeowner decides not to rent their basement, just to do a playroom and with a couple bedrooms in the basement for a family or whatever, then it is a townhouse.
Sounds like it.
If you were approving each of these structures as depicted in this application, and you were putting a caveat in the approval that there shall be no secondary household in the basement or elsewhere, then it would probably meet the definition of a townhouse.
And then it would not be allowed in this zone.
And don't forget about the C variances, too. They also...
Then we should really be talking about six units, not three units.
Well, that's six households.
Right.
I mean, that's what he said, he testified to that.
Well, we're not talking about six fee simple units, we're talking about three fee simple units with the potential of the rentable basement.
Right.
Six households.
But he, Brian testified, he's giving the parking for all six.
So I think we might want to stop here, because the way this got to the board, apparently the administrative officer referred to the planning board, or the jurisdiction, we heard it. You know, do you want to say we don't have jurisdiction on this, or do you want to say we do have jurisdiction?
I don't know, I think we should ask the board members.
I think it would be appropriate this time to take absolute merit determination on that. Unless you want to hear the whole application.
I'm basically, basically, the whole application, I don't think there's anything to add to it.
Well, they might have comments from the neighbors, and you, I mean, you might say, listen, we don't want to approve this on the C variances.
The C variance is mine, I think that we should deal with, does it belong to this board or not?
But don't forget, you know, other people in the order of units that haven't been heard down.
If it doesn't belong to this board, then it doesn't have to leave the board.
Right.
If I just may, when Mr. Flannery was testifying, I asked him about the use of the basement, and he said that there was, at that time, there was no intent to put anything down. He said it might be for the future, so, which I think makes it a townhouse. But also, Mr. Vogt's letter specifically refers to this structure as townhouses. He does it at the top of page three. He says, he says, "The following variances are required for the townhouses," and he also says it on the...
Which, which, what are you reading?
On page three of his letter, item two. It's at the top.
That may have been an inaccurate reference in our review comments. If you go to the heading of zoning, we're referring to the multifamily residential definition.
It does appear also in the project description.
Okay.
He says it's...
Was it in the application?
I think that's a typo, you don't mean to write...
Well, I don't know if it's a typo. Structurally, if we're looking at this without checking every point of the UDO definition, these appear to be townhouses. The way the townhome definition is written, if you don't meet every condition, it says it's not a townhome, and it defaults to multifamily. That's what I read into the record.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think you could podcast on what it says in the report, that the precision of the word probably wasn't as important in it as it is now. All these issues have been laid out.
I think Terry read the UDO into the record, so we know what...
They're offering four parking spaces per unit. If they were, if they were, if this was, if this was a straight application for multifamily for six, for six dwelling units, not for three, for six, how many parking spaces would be required?
For each unit, based upon the number of bedrooms, more often than not, four per 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 unit holds, three units, two families each, if you develop basements. That's typically the appropriate number of parking. That gets reviewed at plot plan, based on the actual architectures that are submitted at that time. If there is a difference in the number of bedrooms, where it triggers a fifth space, then that would have to be added. But based upon what we have, the four spaces is appropriate per UDO standards.
Including four.
Includes basement, assuming basement's in the UDO. Right, I know. UDO needs those. Okay, I think we'll go through the board members. Mr. Flannery, what's your opinion? Do you believe he knows this more?
I'm bewildered.
You what?
I'm bewildered. They say it's a townhouse, they say it's not a townhouse, and he proves it is, he proved it isn't.
Okay, okay. Mr. Flannery?
Yeah, frankly, I'm not really sure what to make of it. I mean, if they, if there was an application before us for six units, then, then, you know, it's a multifamily application. If there's an application before us for three units with potential rentable basements, it may be rented, it may not be rented, then it's a townhouse application. So I'm not really sure, I'm not, I'm not clear on what's before us. Is it an application for six units? There's an application for three fee simple units with a potential rentable basements? According to what Terry read us, it's, that's the definition of a townhouse in our own ordinance, so I'm not sure.
I think every house in Lakewood, basements get rented out, and they're giving the parking for them. That's why they're giving four parking.
I understand, but I think we're, we have a case before us where they're saying that these are townhouses, and we, and Terry read from our ordinance, so I'm not, I think like John said, I'm not really sure what to make of this.
And I think you have to have the overriding question, what's the point in prohibiting townhouses when you can allow six multifamilies? What?
I don't understand that either.
It doesn't, that to me, there's not a logic behind it, and I would...
I don't think, John, that...
If duplexes are allowed, if multifamily is allowed, then how come townhouses are not allowed?
And if it's not allowed?
What's the evil with townhouses?
I just don't, yeah, I don't understand the difference, seventeen units per acre, whether you're building condos, apartments, or duplexes, why are townhouses specifically excluded? I'm not sure.
So, John, you would say one that belongs on our board?
Well, I would say the board has to decide. I think this is a difficult one. I think the applicant, the objector raises, you know, an interesting argument, and I think the board has to sort it out, and, you know.
Okay.
I see both points, but, you know, I also don't understand, what's the evil with townhomes, when you're allowed to have multifamily?
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand that either.
Why restrict townhouses? If you're a townhouse, you can't have a basement.
Right, but I think, but I think it's...
So you could, Lakewood.
A townhouse, you could have the end units if you have exterior entrances, I believe you could.
But if anything, wouldn't that be better than having the duplex with all the... I don't understand why townhouses are excluded, really.
Well, townhouses are not excluded. The ordinance does not say townhouses are prohibited.
But it doesn't list them as permitted.
It doesn't list them as permitted, and that's different than prohibited.
Are there other zones where they're listed as permitted?
Yes.
If they are listed as permitted, you get special provisions for townhouses. So sometimes to do a specific kind of multifamily, you get benefits. And the benefits in order to get them, you have to meet the definition of a townhouse. In this zone, you don't get any special...
Is that tied into the reason why you think it makes no sense to exclude townhomes here, and this is just like a port?
But I don't think townhomes are excluded, and that's in my testimony on this application and in the payback.
Okay, so let's just go through the board. I tend to agree with Terry's, and I think it should be at this board. And, or like you said, Mr. Jackson, that townhouse, every townhouse is a multifamily. I don't think it should be excluded in this board. I'll go further than... Mr. Flannery?
I don't like it.
You don't like the application, or do you feel it belongs at this board? The questions you feel belongs to this board? I'm not asking how you voted.
If a basement takes the way it makes a multifamily, and this is not a permitted use, which is...
If they use the basement, it's a multifamily, it's definitely multifamily, then it's definitely permitted.
Townhouse allowed to live in this zone, and set it to actually be rental, so it's within the system.
Okay.
The concern that I have is, when I look at the plan, it says three-unit subdivision, it doesn't say six, so that's how they came here, and...
It's not a six-unit subdivision.
Right, so it's not a multifamily. To me, it's a townhouse, it's a three-unit subdivision. It doesn't say that they want the basements on the plan. And, you know, my concern is, is that, are we stepping on the toes of the zoning board by expanding it? If there's a problem with the law, it has to be corrected by the legislative body. Otherwise, it goes to the zoning board, is my opinion.
Okay. Carl? What, no, you look, Dave, Dave, I'm sorry. David, get me. What's your opinion?
I think it's a townhouse.
Okay, so... I'll ask him first.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
I didn't hear it.
I, basically, I don't think, most of the board members, they all feel it's a townhouse.
Well, if you're going to decline the application on jurisdiction, I think you have to have a motion and a vote, so that the applicant has the ability to contest that, and you have to have a vote on it.
So I'm going to make a motion under jurisdiction issue. It's not on the application, you didn't have an application.
I guess I would like to make a motion that we cannot hear this application because we do not have jurisdiction.
Okay, do we have, okay, Mr. Flannery, say this.
So the yes is a denial of the, of hearing the application. The yes is in favor of the motion, and that would decline jurisdiction. So the yes, the board should decline jurisdiction, or no, the board should not decline jurisdiction. I think of it that way. Is everybody ready?
Yeah, okay, Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hiverson?
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Mr. Renard?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Dorkey? Okay. The application has been declined for purposes of interpretation of use.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Let the record reflect, Mr. Flunberg has arrived. Okay, we're up to number three. Number, who has number three?
I'm not getting whether this is...
No?
I'm gonna, let the record reflect, I'm gonna recuse myself from this application.
Okay, and Mr. Hiverson is back on board. Okay, SD, 5273, White Street Developers.
I'm going to let Adam introduce this briefly while I'm transitioning between...
No problem.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Peffer, coming to the applicant, Ocean Developers. We're seeking to take, perhaps, a subdivision with three lots. The total square footage of the property is about 2.34 acres. We are in the R40 zone. At the time, after the subdivision should be approved, we'll have three lots, two of them twenty-plus thousand square feet, and the third being worth of forty thousand square feet.
Any variance on this application?
Oh, yeah, we'll get to the variances in one minute.
We're on number three, 5273?
Yes, that is correct.
Looking at our review, Chairman.
Yes.
We had a submission waiver for purpose submission to Ocean County Planning Board, and the reasoning for that gentleman is that you can't... If I can swear in Brian Flannery.
One second. What's with the waivers?
They're seeking a waiver. The checklist requires a purpose submission to Ocean County Planning Board, and we don't have any, so either you've submitted, or you feel that you do not need to submit.
It's not on a county road, it's a minor subdivision, we feel we're exempt. If we're not, we'll have to get that approval.
So we're not voting on any waivers?
Well, I think you are, and I think, I think the recommendation is the applicant
Well, I think you are, and I think the recommendation is the applicant has not submitted, and the basis of not submitting is that they feel that they're exempt. So if you're gonna move forward based upon that waiver, it's with the understanding...
I would just advise that it was submitted to the county, and proof of that was submitted to ALI.
Okay.
So we have submitted.
All right, we didn't have that at the time of our letter.
Okay, yes.
So you're no longer seeking that submission?
We're no longer seeking that relief.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And what I just want to be corrected, we'll end it with two 40,000-plus square foot lots and one 20,000-plus square foot lot.
And it's an R40, so...
It's in the R40 zone, that is correct.
Okay. And Ron, do you swear, Ron?
Per our review for zoning, variances are necessary, including minimum lot area, minimum lot width. Possible issue with respect to the setbacks on the new lot of White Street Mall, I'm sure we'll have testimony upon that. We need testimony as to whether or not the application is going to stay within maximum building coverage. That's it.
That is correct. If I can have Brian Flannery swear at this time?
Do you swear, if I can give you before the court with the truth, I hope it is not the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. The application has submitted is for one existing lot of the dwelling. As I indicated, we're gonna have two 40,000-square-foot lots conforming an area with a zone of one 20,000-square-foot lot. I have two submitted to 40,000, one shows the subject property, and paint for the lines that are being put in. A2 is the tax map of the area, and it's right at the corner of Olive Court and White Street. And I outlined in blue the lots on Olive Court in the vicinity, which are less than 40,000 square foot lots. We have 24,000, 14,000, 17,000, 16,000, 20,000, 18,000, 18,000, and 18,000. So, as far as the consistency with the area, it could have also done a bigger one showing all the other ones in the area. This is an R40 zone, that there was a master plan done in 2014, which recommended this area as an R12 zone. And I think the board is familiar with the master plan process, more familiar than you'd like to be at this point. Our master plan also shows this area as an R12. The proposed master plan, if it gets adopted, even if it was changed to a 20,000-square-foot, R20 zone, you know, jumped up from R12 to R20, it would still conform as a big, beautiful lot. It'll fit nice in the area, fit nice houses in the area. The relief that we're asking for with respect to the variance is one lot area for one of these three lots at 20,000 or 40,000 required. I've already given my testimony that there are other lots in the area that way. And certainly, I see future development in that area that's old, R40 zone, certainly being less than 20,000 square foot lots. The minimum lot width, we're asking for variances of 130, 182, 109. And the master plan of 2007 had indicated for the R40 zone that the minimum lot width should be reduced to 100 feet. 100 feet being a very wide, very nice lot by basic standards. Certainly, the master plan of 2014, and the new master plan that I anticipate will be approved shortly, are gonna have something that these lots will no longer be a variance situation. Rear setback of 30 feet for the lot at the corner of White Street, and it's just the nature of that lot line, sort of, where it bears off an angle. And we would comply with the building coverage that's permitted by ordinance, but we're not gonna request any variance relief for that. So the variances are with the one area, the width, and the one rear setback.
If I can just speak of, just one thing, Brian. Are you seeking the variance per our comment for the 30-foot setback at the corner lot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What's the variance?
Yeah, it's a triangular-shaped lot. So, when you put a normal house in there, because the lot line comes close to it, and...
You have the building envelope, you're much more than 30 feet away from it. Which way are you measuring?
Where are you measuring?
What?
Right. Right, we... On this, it's a little lot front, and a side, and then the third one is called the rear. And 30-foot rear yard, if they both request.
Your left or your right?
I don't understand the variances. I don't think there's any, I don't understand what the variances is.
Yeah, that's our comment. We couldn't interpret whether you actually need the variance, that's why I'm seeking clarification.
We're not gonna request that.
Okay, thank you.
Terry, you agree, there's no variance?
That was our interpretation, Chairman.
Okay, that's why I questioned you.
Right.
So basically, the only variance you have is the lot class?
Lot area on one lot, and the lot width.
And you gave, "We need testimony regarding maximum building coverage," are you complying with standards?
We're gonna comply with the maximum building coverage of 20 percent.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's a pretty big house, you got 20 percent on a 40,000-square-foot lot.
Well, the one lot that's 20,000 square foot, it would be a 4,000-square-foot footprint, which is still big enough. The other comments in Terry's report, we would comply with. I know there was a question on improvement, there's a tennis court in back that would be removed because of...
What's currently on the lot?
Currently, it's a nice, a beautiful house, which will remain with the tennis court, but the tennis court straddles one of the lot lines, so the tennis court has to be removed.
And the wooden sidewalks, curbs and sidewalks, all of them?
Curbs and sidewalks, we're not requesting any relief from you.
Okay. Any questions on any board members? Okay, Stephen Nolan will open to the public.
Keep on bringing up the 2007 master plan on this. Those plans were horrible, look what it did to our town. And the recommendation that this would mean that it should be a R12 was only if all infrastructure was in place, and nothing should be done before. The committee decided to approve the R12 before, and they took out the full recommendation. So like, they pick and choose, and then it was squashed and overturned. So just because it was, and there's no infrastructure, and...
Well, we're proposing two lots at 40,000 square feet, and one at 20,000.
I assume you keep on bringing up the master plan, it's not the plan?
Well, part of the testimony that I have to give is with respect to compliance with the master plan, when we're asking for variance. And I understand that the master plans that I have to testify at this point are tenuous, because we have one from 2007 that was never implemented, we have one from 2014 that was never implemented, and now we have one in 2017 that's undergoing a process that's contentious. But as a planner presenting an application for an applicant, I have to talk about the master plan. I wish it was easier, my job would be easier once the master plan is done, and the roads are wider, then it'll be easier for all of you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public would like to be heard on this application?
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Grunberg.
On the, on one of the, is it she too? There's some sort of structure that looks like in front of the house. I can't figure out what that is. Are you able to describe that? It looks like a funny-shaped thing.
It's a tennis court with a pool?
It's a tennis court, it's a tennis court, is that a pool?
Maybe a pool.
It's like it's in the front.
Yeah, it's some kind of a landscape there.
It'll be removed if it's, if it's locked?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anybody from the public would like to be heard, please come forward. Please take your name to the record, you have to be a friend.
Menachem Lefkoitz.
Spelling name? Okay, return to the record.
Do I hand you a swear from testimony to give before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
What's your address?
At 23 Olive, I live right next to it.
20 what?
23 Olive Court.
Olive Court, okay. Please proceed.
I'd very much like to see this be approved, to keep the neighborhood, be the same way the neighborhood is, mix of all large lots, get them nice houses. I don't wanna see any school coming in any area. I'd be very happy to see it go through.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to be heard, please come forward. Please take your name to the record.
Thomas Riley, 662 A. Plouffe Drive in Lakewood.
Do I hand, Mr. Riley, do you swear from testimony to give before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do you have the spelling on his name?
R-I-L-E-Y. I'd just like to offer the following. We had a pretty good-sized fire not so long ago, down by Pine Street in the park. And I don't know whether, they were debating whether that's a townhouse or a multi-family. It spread wildly. I think part of the problem is when we make variances like this, and redefine what a structure is, and in this particular case, it goes with fire protection, the wall go from the basement all the way to the ceiling, separating the dwelling.
You're talking about townhouses and multi-family, you're going back to the floor?
Correct.
Okay.
To prevent any more fires from occurring and loss of life, we need to reexamine some of this stuff.
Okay.
The other thing I'd just like to make a point about, it's got to do with the urban sprawl that's going on. I had a guy get killed in front of my gate the other night on a bicycle. Riding along Route 70, traffic is horrific, and we don't have any sidewalks there. We have nowhere for these people to go with their bicycles. There's no alternative but to walk on the shoulder, which is used, as everyone knows, as another lane to escape the traffic. So before we expand this town any further than it already is, I think we'd like to reexamine our safety issues, our environmental issues, and slow everything down and take a look at the loss of life, the potential for it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public would like to be heard, please come forward. Stephen Nolan, on the term of motion on this application? Yes, Mr. Franklin, you have to tell him.
We have 2.34 acres, we're in the R40 zone. Two of the lots will be over 40,000 square feet, which is a builder's acre. And one lot will be 20-plus thousand square feet, it'll be a half acre. These are not townhouses, these are single-family, nice lots, that as Brian testified to, it works within the area, the majority of the lots around them, the houses are on 18, 17, 16,000-square-foot lots. We're putting in sidewalks, curving, and we would ask that, we think this application is a good application, and fits within the area.
You're not coming back out with the subdivision of 40,000?
We're coming back, this is the application for three lots from one, two 40-plus thousand square foot lots, one 20,000.
Okay. And I'd like to make a motion on this application. Move to approve? Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Grunberg, a second, welcome.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hiversen?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbom?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mrs. Gruffus?
No.
Mr. Dorkey?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion approved. Okay, number four. Where's the term? Yes, we got you tonight.
You did, as promised.
Yeah, okay, you're welcome. Okay. Terry?
We're hearing...
Number four, congregation.
...
Yeshiva Kofan, yes. 116 North Street.
Okay, thank you. As indicated in our review, under submission waivers, or seeking waivers for traffic study in the I.S., we can support the traffic study waiver based on the fact that this is a county highway and county jurisdiction, and they're gonna have to demonstrate traffic impacts and traffic design to the S.A.S. of the county. Secondly, we support the waiver of the I.S., I.S.C. 13, on the basis that the property is previously developed, and we know of no违法(违法) elements.
So, we have a motion to go along with the engineer's recommendations on the waivers? Anybody?
Yes, yes, I'll move along.
You move it? Anybody second it?
I'll second.
Okay. Let's go through the seconds, it's all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the waivers are approved.
Right now, for the board's clarification, we have our traditional letter, which was prepared August 16. We have a supplemental letter that there is an alternate plaque that is provided as exhibit. Is that correct? There is. And if I could respond and open, John Doyle on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Liston is here next to me, because we're not co-producing this presentation, but while this very successful, existing yeshiva has grown since we first approved it five years ago, and now wants this larger and needed building, and while we are surrounded by either approved or existing duplexes, townhouses, synagogue, apartments, we do have on one side a single-family resident neighbor, Mr. Liston's client. They expressed some concerns, and through significant negotiation between the parties, the intervention of a third person, Mr. Liston and myself, we have a signed agreement that should be part of the hearing and the record in this matter. Mr. and Mrs. Majez, represented by Mr. Liston. Mrs. Majez is with us tonight. So I would like to have that put on the record, and then we would present our case, with the board having the full knowledge that, I don't think there's any other objectors, but that the one that was most touched by this application has deemed themselves to be satisfied with two pages and about 24 conditions.
Mr. Liston, do you agree with everything you said?
I do, and it's been signed by the rabbi, and possibly been signed by both my clients, David and Chad, he's checked. It's work that's been in progress for about a month. I'm proud to say that everybody is satisfied, and we only ask that the, and I'll give a copy to your attorney, that a copy of the agreement to the effect of any resolution approval, so it's fine.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Doyle and Mr. Liston, for meeting and working it out. I appreciate it.
There will be no show tonight.
Okay. You'll be back, don't worry.
And I will too.
I guess. Okay.
Thank you. As I said in the earlier part of the parcel, well, there are some variances that are sought. Much of that is because there was a very sensible choice made. In this zone, we could have gone up five stories and provided a similar amount of square footage and space for the studies and living of the students who would have been here. We would have indeed height variance, but we would have gotten rid of most or a lot of the other variances. We thought it was better to be horizontal in this area, rather than five-story vertical. I think that was an appropriate planning decision, and hopefully you'll find favor with the application with that in mind. With that said, if I could have Mr. Liston's foreword.
Do you swear from testimony to give before the court with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Glenn Lines, professional engineer, professional planner, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Mr. Lines, I made some comments about the surrounding neighborhood, the nature of the site, and the basic planning decision that was made. Was that accurate?
Yes, of course.
Describe what we have in front of the board.
We have a two-story school with a finished basement. Largest floor area is 16,500 square feet, with an L-shaped building. We're located at the, basically the westerly end of Locust Street, where the turnaround is.
Very peculiar site with that turnaround, isn't it?
Yes. We have access to Route 70, and, if you remember, the property to our west, which would be the right of the new school, and the rear, used to be the driving range, that's currently under development as duplexes. To our, to our east or left, are two residential houses, a mayoral comprehensive objective home. After that, with townhouse developments across the street, or apartments. So the B5A, for the most part, in this area, which starts at Conter River Water and proceeds easterly, is mostly now multi-family residential. This lot will permit a multi-family.
Townhouses are multi-family?
Actually, both.
Okay.
How many units could we put in?
This is a B5, same zone.
Right.
It's the same zone.
Right. Whatever, we could have, whatever the town would have, we have one acre lot, we could have had 17 units, as you heard in the last application on this property, which, based on, would have, most likely, we also would have meant a four-story, you know, multi-family apartment building, condominium, whatever. Again, there is an existing school on the property, and we're proposing to develop it with a new school. As one of the conditions that was in the agreement with the neighbor, originally intended to be a building centered on the lot, they requested that we moved to five feet to the west, so a 20-foot side guard setback to their property. There's a lot of other things in, I don't want to say that the only things in there, but they wanted a five-foot high, four-on-four fence from the rear property line to the front of parking spaces, and they had some very extensive landscaping requirements and requests regarding maintaining the existing pine trees that are between, where the school will be building, and copper lawn, add a long back copper lawn.
That's all part of the record? You submitted it?
Right, I'm just, I don't wanna go through them one by one, and answer a lot of the buffer requirements for the parking, so...
How many parking spaces you have?
We have, we have thirty parking spaces where our condo is in 27, if required.
You're renting out the basement, the whole?
So, the basement is going to be used for... So, the basement is going to be used for the school. There's a, two recreation rooms, cafeteria, a kitchen, and some dormitory rooms in the basement.
You're not renting it out for some-
So, there won't be any-
Any hall, anything rented in?
Yeah, and it's a, it's a high school, and so there won't be any, any rental of the basement.
Strictly a school?
Yes.
No, nothing on it?
School will be at an secondary level as well as college level. The operational questions were asked, Mr. Lyons, as we understand it, there would be a hundred and five to 135 students, mostly living on campus, the balance being bus-in and the number that the city would be sufficient.
Correct. It'd be between 30 and 50 students bus, which would be one, one school bus.
What's the number of students in the maximum amount?
Mr. Alback, do you wish to be sworn?
Please state your name to the record.
Abe Alback, 124th Street, Pikeville, New Jersey.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony before the court of the District of Hogswood and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes, the other project is?
My, I have been involved in negotiating with the neighbor, very detailed, very lengthy negotiations, and I've been involved with the plan pretty for almost five months, and am very easily involved with this, with this project. The max capacity for the school is probably around 180 students, that's with the post-high school with the high school, but like I said, only one bus is sufficient, there are enough will be on-site sleeping.
It said there's 16,000 square feet on the building?
There's, no, it's Brooklyn, Brooklyn.
That's the largest floor.
The largest floor.
Standard, it's 46,000.
Forty-six thousand per foot building, altogether with the basement, with the two floors.
For 180 students, you're doing great.
Well, again, there's, there's gonna be, there's, there's gonna be different divisions, but yeah, it's, it's all worked out.
Looks like a beautiful building.
Yeah, thank God, I went into it and-
And we go from small schools to big schools, 180 kids.
We're gonna build a four-story school building? No. No, this is, this is really, the maximum use of the site, and part of the room actually just to reflect, part of the room of the neighbors that cannot rent it out, and it's part of the, will be part of the resolution, you cannot rent it out to any outside, then use, and the student cannot have it anyway, so there's no concern for that whatsoever.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's the only concern about parking?
Yeah, sure.
If you need parking, so there's no variance on the ground? Okay.
There was questions raised about the HDAC, that will be sheltered so that it is-
Yeah, all HDAC will be on the roof.
Fire protections?
All applicable, whatever the codes require, which obviously building requires a fire sprinkler, so there'll obviously be a fire sprinkler.
Lighting?
All, I'm sorry, all adequate lighting, as per necessary according to the, to the, to the standards. We will conform with any recommendations by the county manager during the additional plans.
There were, traffic, let me go back to the engineer. Traffic circulation plan works?
Yes, we have two, two-way driveways, plus we have the western driveway, eastern driveway, drop off in front of the school, six cars, garbage trucks, they would put the opposite of the, and the eastward driveway, so they can do a head-in collection of the dumpster that the west side of the site can-
You have a path? You have a path to the dumpster? Concrete path?
The dumpster is ready to be handled, it's, it's a highway front building, against the west side of the park, so they can head in with that.
Did you meet with the Department of Public Works?
We will, and we'll come back to you every time.
Okay.
We'll get to that.
John's okay with the garbage?
Oh, yes.
The works?
I'll head in next evening.
Okay.
John, ten years, I'm better.
Overall, and taking into account the variances we're asking for, do they meet the test of the C2 variance, that is, it presents a better zoning alternative, particularly in light of what we're doing on the site, the agreement with the neighbor, the surrounding uses?
Yes.
The benefits that accrue by this zoning alternative are the lower profile, the better utilization of this piece of land?
Yes.
Do you see any detriments in granting the benefits?
I do not.
Therefore, the benefits outweigh the judgments?
Benefits definitely outweigh the benefits.
Do they advance the purposes of zoning, open air space, et cetera?
Okay. Dave, you had a question?
It's a beautiful building, 45,000 square foot, 180 students, but as you grow, is there any plans for putting more parking here? It seems to be stable in the school, it's growing.
Dave, I think they testified, the maximum is 180 students, they have 130, 135 now? I think they're going up to 180.
Yeah, the parking is for the max, we can, we can't go more, and the park does, it is at the max.
Do we need more than 180?
They have to come back to the board, if they have, if they need more?
And actually, the agreement with the neighbors is that we cannot go up any higher, and we don't want that.
And if yes, you have to come back to the board, you have to come back. The approval's only 180.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question on the-
Mr. Grunberg.
On the basement plan, you seem to show two very large mechanical rooms, each one is probably about 2,500 square feet, about 5,000 square feet mechanical room.
Okay, it's a fair question, so typically in the basement, we leave, we leave large mechanical rooms to accommodate any future pumps should they be needed, or any future boiler equipment, we're not sure exactly what type of boilers, we're not adding any classrooms or bedrooms, no dorm rooms? No. And don't put a dorm room in the basement, you sell it. In the back, we're able to take whatever, wherever's mechanical, it's gonna be mechanical, storage, it's totally typical.
It's a lot of space.
It's, it's a large building, there's no other dormitory rooms being snuck in, we're not hiding anything, we're up front.
I think proportion for 45,000 square feet, 5,000, that's not much.
It's only 2,500.
Oh, 2,500, right.
Yeah, but again, there's utility, storage, it's not-
Yes, Mr. Hiberson has a question.
As a general comment, you're putting in a very substantial school in a very, very congested area, which is, which is about to be completely filled with new residences, and the, the street congestion, apart from access to this building site, will be extremely hazardous, there is no doubt. The variances you're asking for, I can understand, because you're putting a large structure and a lot of students into a very small area, and I wonder whether, whether you're, you're not being overly enthusiastic with asking to put so many students and so many, so many facilities in a tiny area.
I appreciate, I appreciate your concerns. Most of the, of the traffic, first of all, we have to count, not a lot of traffic, as like you said, most of the students are gonna be on-site sleeping there. There's not a lot of field traffic, they're not allowed to bring their own car, they can't get in and out.
Most of your traffic in that area exists already, and it's very congested.
There's, there, actually, the area is not, I'm not arguing with you, but I'm saying that the traffic here is not that congested, we're not, there is a function school there now. The, the amount of traffic volume, we're not gonna be increasing by any substantial means at all, A, B-
I think you testified there'll be only one bus coming there.
There's only one bus coming there, everyone else is gonna be on-site.
Real estate.
The staff to have now, they're not gonna be, and like I said, we could've gone four stories with no variances, which again, we're not, we're here to work with people, we're here to work with neighbors, with the neighbor, you know, we're gonna work together.
Thank you.
I, I will only tell you one anecdote, I went to see the property again tonight at 5:00 o'clock, I couldn't imagine, 5:15, I couldn't imagine, and, and I found myself making a curve, and sitting there, and I realized I was sitting in potentially traffic coming off of 70 to go down Locust. As I sat there, realized I'm in here-
It's adjacent to, it's also adjacent to a very large, busy shopping area.
I, well, it's, it, the, the nature of it, it is an adjacent, my point was, I waited for a minute and didn't see a car, a car go by.
Do any members of the public want to cross-examine Mr. Doyle?
Good point, I wasn't sworn in good time. The, I'll, I'll just acknowledge the law in terms of left-side parking not being an issue.
I'm sorry, I just couldn't help myself.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Neither do I.
Any, any other board members have any questions? Seeing no one, we'll let it to the public. Anybody from the public would like to be heard on this application, please step forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close it to the public. We'll retain a motion. Anyone want to make a motion?
I have a motion to, a motion to approve the application with the agreement through the parties, including in the resolution, including the fact that the basement's not gonna be rented to any other asset activities and all that.
And I think we said it was 180 students, that's what we said. We have a motion on the second. Mr. Jackson, you have the, the agreement?
Yes, I do.
So you could attach it to the-
We'll make that part of the record, and you have another copy to give to Ms. Morris?
I'll, I'll email it.
Yeah, you do email it, copy me on the email, thank you.
Okay. See, we're glad to hear this.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hiberson?
No.
Mr. Clansbough?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Renner? Mr. Fulman?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Corfield?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask-
I'd like them to stay up here and continue, because while they were up here, the Yankees scored two runs, and they're still at bat, and I don't wanna change anything. I don't think we should change anything.
I'm assuming you weren't looking at that during the application?
I, I, it popped up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, and Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
What's the story with number five?
I don't know, 'cause I've asked Mr. Pepper, and he has not given me any indication. He definitely can't do a right help.
And Mr. Schlesinger, left over there, I see.
What did you write to Frank, he said he'd be back after eight o'clock, so if Mr. Pepper wants to do tonight-
Okay, so that's a question mark, so we're going down to, we're going down to seven. Who, Aaron Mansour, who's number seven?
That's him.
Okay, so Mr. Weinstein, please come forward. And it's a tablet, we're on SB 2248, Aaron Mansour, 512 Chestnut Street.
All right, before we go to Mr. Mansour, was there an announcement with regard to SB 2279, which was more effective?
Yes.
I believe I did adjourn.
You did.
Okay.
You did. And number five, we left out, there's a question mark.
Okay, thank you.
So, Terry, are you ready?
Yes, I am, Chairman.
Okay.
Referring to our review letter, day of September 14th, under submission waivers, they are requesting traffic study, again, per the submission, motion county planning, and alarm and impact statement. Waiver for traffic studies have been requested, the applicant's indicated that the nature of the request is that planned revisions have delayed the completion of a traffic study. Do you have anything further on that, Mary?
Uh-
Or Brian?
Not that he's, not that he's sworn, so I guess we'll, once we, once we present it-
Now, do we have to make a motion on the waivers first?
Yeah, so let's-
So that's one of the waivers, that's why I'm asking.
Scott's doing the waivers.
Well, and, I, I had spoke to Scott in reference to it, and with the-
Scott is Scott Cannon.
Scott Cannon, Scott Cannon's doing it. With the holidays, he didn't wanna take traffic counts that didn't make sense, so now that the holiday's over, he's, he's gonna do the traffic report, he'll submit it, obviously we're, we're on Route 70, we need a traffic report for the county, we need one for the state.
So you're not asking for waiver on the, on the-
They're asking for a waiver for hearing purposes.
Yes.
Hearing purposes.
They're going to ultimately give us a traffic study.
Yes.
Okay.
Presumably during compliance, if approved.
Can I ask you, what good does a traffic study submission do after the case is heard?
Well, my, my opinion on this is the traffic study on this particular site really doesn't help the board anyway. If it was on local road impacts or something, this is on Route 70.
Doesn't open up on Chestnut?
Yes, it does.
So that's not, that's incorrect then. It does, it does impact it, and I don't think this should be heard until we have a traffic study. I would, again, use-
When, when could you have a traffic study? Where?
But, he's, he's gonna do the counts in the next couple weeks, and the traffic study would be a couple weeks after that. It, it, it's, it enters on a county road and a state road, it's a permitted use.
Well, so you, you need county approval also?
Yes.
And you can't get county approval without a traffic study?
Correct, that's, that's the point I was just gonna make, is that we need county approval, Chestnut Street is a county road, we cannot get county approval without having a traffic study, that's what good the traffic study does is after the approval, but obviously the board has the discretion of deciding not to hear it tonight.
Is there no opening on Chestnut, I'm agreed to that.
Mr. Jackson?
Well, I, I just raised the question because of the traffic study, if they said they're going to submit it later, I don't see what good that does in the hearing process, and just remind me, are there variances sought on this application?
Yes.
So if there's variances, what are the variances for? Parking and-
Lot area, lot width, front yard setback, side yard setback, area, side yard setback, and our interpretation is-
That's it?
All street park.
So, the traffic counts, circulation might be relevant to the board's consideration, so that's what I think.
Just, just so you know, the lot was created as a result of a previous subdivision, so many of those variances are already pre-existed.
Right, but you have a restaurant and an office building, they're two pretty intense uses.
Understood.
And, and, you know, it's not up to me, it's up to the board, Mr. Fulman said he doesn't wanna grant the waiver, I, I think we should hold the board on that issue.
Oh, yeah.
If the, if the board's inclined to agree, then they should have to come back when they have all those requirements.
It's fine, we, we can come back with a judge.
I think we should wait.
Okay, I think the, the board will feel we should wait.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so, do we have to answer to a meeting, or you, or you-
Can we carry it so that we don't have to do further notice?
Well, you don't know, Mr. Weinstein, you don't know when you're gonna get it.
So how much time do you have?
Traffic study was ordered three months ago, doesn't do counts this summer, doesn't do counts at the holidays, but, and alone does count to the-
Yeah, but, Mr. Schmuckler?
November 21st?
Give it three weeks. We'll have it, we ordered it three months ago.
Do you think you'll have November 21st?
More than three, come on.
Because of, okay-
November 21st should be okay. We're not gonna ask for the earlier meeting than that, 'cause I don't believe we would have it, and we'd end up carrying it again.
If not, you have to re-notice. Okay?
Rather just carry it that way.
Okay. So, we need a motion? We're just carrying?
Well, the, the consensus of the board unanimously appears to be that they weren't complete, because they don't wanna grant the submission waiver, that would make their application not technically complete, so you'll, you'll provide a time waiver at the extent, once necessary?
Yes, absolutely.
So, members of the public be advised, number seven on tonight's calendar, SB 2248, the application of Aaron Mansour, has been adjourned and will be heard on November 21st, 2017, 6 o'clock at this meeting hall, there will be no further notices.
Okay. And number eight, number eight.
Number five, we're gonna carry till November 21st as well.
Number five, we'd like you to hear, we just want to carry it to November 21st.
Okay. Any others want to carry tonight?
That's number five. Is that the board's consensus to carry number five from the 21st?
We're talking about SB 2175, just to be clear.
Yes, that's the, so that'll be on the November 21st.
And I just ask you, Mr. Weinstein and Adam, please sit down and try to work out whatever's possible before you come to me, and what is the sort of position over there?
Yes, members of the public be advised, number five on tonight's calendar, SE 2175, the application, Yashiko Petrovsky, has been adjourned and will be heard on November 21st, 2017, 6 o'clock, this meeting hall, there will be no further notices.
Okay. Number eight. Mr. Weinstein, you want to go in?
Uh, I mean so. Albert Run?
Albert Street.
Yep.
We're talking about SB 2282?
Yes, Albert Street Holdings, Howard Street. Howard Street and Point Street. Okay. Howard Street and Point Street. Okay. Terry, when you get a chance, go through the...
One moment, sir.
Yes. All right. Let me just see which one. Which one is this? 2248?
As indicated in our September 14th review, we do not appear to have any submission waivers under zoning. Front yard setback variance is being requested as well as a rear yard setback. It's unclear whether parking relief is required for the community building. We'll have testimony on that. In addition, minimum front yard setback variances are required for new lots 1 and 20 in Block 80. It's 2010. I believe that is the bulk variances. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And then continuing on, we have design waivers with respect to non-perpendicular right-of-way lines or, or lot lines, I'm sorry, as well as for two areas of perpendicular parking spaces near the community building.
Thank you, Terry. Mrs. Weinstein?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Miriam Weinstein, on behalf of Albert Street Holdings LLC. For a change, this application should be a really easy one. It's really a no-brainer. What we have before us, and everyone's making faces, but it's, it's the truth.
It's the variances.
I'll explain it. Let me explain. What we have before us is an amended major subdivision approval. The board may recall this application. This application was approved for Somerset Development. It was a total of 70 homes. It was a mix of townhomes and single-family homes and a shul slash clubhouse. The project was sold and the new owner wants to change the project to a total of 42 single-family homes. So what's the catch? Because they're all making faces. There really isn't any. Really and truly, the new owner, the Shroom family, would like to see single-family homes on this property. The variances that you see, and you see rightfully so, are the exact same variances that were already approved for the clubhouse the last time around. So the only thing, those variances have all been approved. They all relate to the clubhouse. And the only thing changes, changing is that we're taking 70 houses, some of which were multifamily, or I don't want to use that term anymore, multifamily or, or townhouses, whatever they were. And now they're all going to be single-family.
What size lots are that?
Um, well...
The 42, you know?
Um, we'll get to that in the testimony. Give me a second. The only issue that I do want to bring to your attention is that as a result of a legal challenge by a neighboring property owner, there was an order signed by a judge, I think this was referenced once before when we came in front of this board, vacating, or abandoning, I guess, the road vacation of Charity Toll Avenue. Obviously, any approval granted by this board this evening would have to be made subject to the vacation of that portion of Charity Toll Avenue that affects this project. So obviously, it's going to be the applicant's responsibility to obtain, I guess, what we call a revacation of that portion. The, we have spoken to the attorney for the party...
The township to revacate it? What was the judge's order?
They can vacate that portion. What happened was the, the whole Charity Toll Avenue was vacated. A neighbor, a neighboring property owner challenged it. The judge signed an order vacating the entire road vacation. What we're going to request is that only this portion that affects our project be vacated again.
You stop taking roads.
I understand. The only is, this one was already, well, that's why I said the applicant is taking it, is, is going to accept this as their risk that the township would potentially grant this because they had already granted, they already granted it once. And the neighbor, the neighbor that's objecting to it has no objection to the portion that fronts our property. We've spoken to their attorney. They have no objection to us, to this being reinstated.
So we might have to open up all roads now?
Do you show where, where that is?
Yeah, he has to be sworn. So let's, why don't we, why don't, why don't we have one?
Mr. Weinstein, you swore from testimony that you will give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Glenn Lyons, professional engineer, professional planner, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Just one second. Ms. Weinstein, technically, right now, if you don't want to come to a planning board, you want to build your 72 houses. You can't do it until you get the vacation, right?
We still have an issue, correct.
You're subject to vacation.
Correct. We're subject, we're subject to the vacation and the vacation right now doesn't exist. So either way, yes, the applicant has to...
If the township does not give you, vacate the lot, then you have to come with a totally new application on this whole plan.
Correct. But what, what we are requesting at this time is for the board to act favorably on the application as we're presenting it this evening. Obviously, it would have to be subject to the committee, township committee agreeing to the vacation. If they don't agree to the vacation, then we have to come back.
Have you had any discussions with the committee or with their council? Do you think the committee is inclined to do this?
I have been in contact with township committee members.
Do you think they're inclined to do...
The committee seems inclined to do it.
All right. Can you just show us, like Mr. Grunberger asked, an aerial so the board can get a sense of where this road is and what the consequences would be of vacating it?
Sure. Mr. Weinstein, if you could just point out the Charity Toll Avenue.
Let's just look at that issue first.
Sure.
Charity Toll Avenue basically runs down, these are easily property. This dark black line along the, what's on the upper, you know, the upper side of our development. That's the center line of existing Charity Toll Avenue.
What is run, between where and where?
It runs from Pine Street to Tower Street.
Okay.
Okay. So it was vacated previously. Now, to replace what, what was vacated as Charity Toll Avenue, our development takes the next street over to the west, which is Sims Avenue, which is partially developed to the South of our site and extended all the way out to Pine Street. This Sims Avenue lines up perfectly on the other side of Pine Street with a paper street that, remember, we had an application for an office building and a daycare center. So the Sims Avenue was shown on our plan that we brought in several months ago is directly across the street in the, in the sewer bridge development. So right now, if, if the township doesn't vacate Charity Toll, we're going to have this slightly offset intersection of Charity Toll and Sims on the other side of the street. So logically, it makes sense to vacate.
And Mr. Weinstein, just one question. So even if, if it's vacated, but if Charity Toll Avenue is vacated, but with our proposal, there's still, there's still a thoroughfare to get from Pine...
Yes, but I was just...
Okay, because that's what I think the board wants to hear.
And I'm just following the vague rule. We don't want to vacate streets. Basically, what our plan does is it takes what was a township street and now dedicates a new street to take its place, which goes from Pine Street and the developer that we're discussing...
That's a paper street?
Excuse me, that is now paper street development. The one that you said you're dedicating now...
No. No. We're going to create, we're going to create a new road that didn't exist in, to replace the one that's being vacated.
Sims.
Yeah, but that's...
Sims is also a paper street.
No. No, this is a new road the developer's giving on part of his property.
So Sims is a piece of property that's owned by the developer?
Yes.
And he's getting that and it's a vacated road.
So you're flipping it with...
Correct. And just, Mr. Fulman, I just want to make it clear. There will be, I understand your concern and it's a very valid one. There will be a thoroughfare between Pine Street and what's that other street?
Towers.
And Tower.
And Tower Street. The same way there would have been had, had there been, had Charity Toll existed. It's just a different street. It's, it's Sims and as per Mr. Weinstein's testimony, it lines up better, right?
It lines up.
Why don't you just create a new street, set a Sims, call it Charity Toll, move it over?
Well, we can't do that.
No, because...
And that's basically what you're doing. You're just shifting the road.
But the line, the street that we line up with on our southern edge?
Right.
That's existing already. That's already called Sims.
Okay.
So we're just extending Sims out. Will it be, will it be able to get over? We'll be going from, I believe you can go all the way from Oak through Sims, through this development to Pine.
Okay.
What are probably the other streets? Scotts and Lee and...
Those are paper streets.
But Sims is already an existing paper street. It's on here.
Yeah, but not in that, yeah, but further down. Over there it is. Sims existed, but not, but not, this, here, Glenn, just show them, show them on the map. Where Sims, where Sims existed and what we're adding. Here, let's, go ahead. Let Mr. Weinstein show everybody.
Fifteen, a while ago, Sims used to go, as all the streets have developed in this area. Sims used to go straight through all the way to Pine. The township vacated all Sims Avenue in our development area and part of Pine River Building. So you have Charity Toll as a paper street, Sims as a paper street up to Tower. It has been vacated. It was vacated many years ago.
So Lee and Scotts are all vacated?
We, oh, from the other side? No, those are still existing paper streets up in... This goes back to the prior, that's, that's the, was the existing condition that we used that, that's what we got from the surveyor.
These are all vacated?
Yes. They were vacated as part of the initial approval, which was the single-family house development. So they've all been vacated.
So Sims was a street that was vacated many moons ago?
Yes.
Right.
You, that you...
We're going to vacate a new Sims Avenue.
So right now, right now, it's part of the developer's property because it was vacated.
I'm trying to take that. All vacated.
Yeah, but can't take that one back.
So...
Hope you have the...
We're willing to take that risk that they're going to, that the township's going to re-vacate it. It runs along the back of these lots and our 25 feet of vacation is sort of setting in as a, a dedicated buffer between the single-family houses and the single-family houses. As far as the variances we request, there was a variance in our application for Lot 1 of Block 8.
Didn't, didn't you testify these are all existing variances for the...
No, we have, there are two variances in the letter. One, one is brand new. That was the front setback variance on Lot 1, Block 8, 30, 20.
We're not asking for that.
It's in Terry's letter.
Oh.
Terry, we're not requesting that variance. This house, which shows the 50-foot right-of-way, this will be a department front setback.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. The second variance, which is item number five, which is on the letter, is for the last house on this street. We're requesting 15 feet from Peter Street, Tower Street. 10 feet was approved in the original application that was done by Sunset Development. So we're taking what was approved 10-foot side yard setback, the single-family house, and we are increasing it to 15-foot side yard setback. So basically, this, this house is the only house that has a...
What's required?
Has a variance, a front setback.
What's the, what's the setback required?
Required is 30 feet. We're proposing 50.
The last approval you have, the third, a 10?
10.
And it's good, okay?
Okay. The, as far as the variances that are followed after the community building, we're proposing the exact same variances that were submitted and approved in the prior application based on where the community building is located. Basically, it's a front setback of 5 feet to the new street, which is called, our plan is a terrible place. But that was, that was in the same variance that was approved by the board under the original application. Same as item number 3 in Zone 8, which is the rear setback variance. We haven't moved the community building at all. So it's the exact same variance that was approved. As far as lot street parking, we have the exact same lot street parking layout. We have 10 parking spaces proposed in the parking lot. We have seven head-in spaces on one side of the building and nine head-in spaces on the other side of the building for a total of 26 spaces. And that's, that's what was approved. That's what went with the original application for the original building. So...
How big is that building?
Sorry?
How big is the building?
I...
The layout plan references 2448 square feet of main sanctuary area, which is the basis of the parking requirement. We had interpreted 18 parking spaces necessary and we had, we had identified 10 prior to rotation of the plan. You're saying, Glenn, that there were head-in spaces on the property that are specifically designated for this building? Is that correct?
Those are head-in spaces on the community building, property.
Okay.
Intended to be used only for the community building.
How many parking spaces?
Not required for the parking count outside the community building. Of all of these, all the single-family houses we have proposed have four parking spaces. So there's, and it's additional on-street parking.
So what's the total we have for the community center?
26.
You have 26.
Including the head-in spaces.
Including head-in.
These are head-in spaces which were on the, part of the original.
And Terry, you said, according to UDL...
With the understanding that...
You need 18.
They have adequate parking with the rest of the unit, that, that's fine.
That's what he's tested for.
There's no other use that those head-in spaces need to be...
There's no, there's no central hall there?
No.
Okay. Okay.
So that, yes, and so all of the single families, every single family has four parking spaces. So there's no, no need to have any space. And again, there's additional, the on this side of the street, on these single-family houses that we're changing from the townhouse to the single family, they don't have sufficient on-street parking on the other side of the street.
Area's coming out?
Um, just incidentally, that, that building is going to have two mikvahs also in the basement.
You don't have any parking then?
Well, the, one is a Friday night mikvah. So that doesn't need parking. What? It is. It's exactly the same? I'm told it's the exact, exact same synagogue as the Somerset Walk synagogue with two mikvahs in the basement.
They don't have any parking either.
But we're going to visit up to two more spots.
As many fewer houses.
Half the house.
Forty-two houses only.
Instead of seven.
These are all public streets?
Yes.
So it's garbage, maybe from the township?
Regular town, regular township, cans are all to the street.
They've already proved curbside pickup, and let you see back to the public.
And sidewalks all over.
Yes.
sidewalks, curves.
How wide are the roads of inside?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, you think?
Mm-hmm, thirty.
Thirty-four, so wide road.
Thirty-six after the stretch of 36.
I think actually it's 30.
I thought it worked, so...
I think UDL says, I don't think it, okay.
No, they're 32.
Do you have anything else on the report?
Twenty-eight required by RSIS. We usually put in 32 to get you an additional four feet away.
And this is 343?
Thirty-six on the... Because that's it, because we come back when it's 36 will wipe out. Because it will be...
A thoroughfare. The, the concept is right, that that's going to be a thoroughfare. But these are just going to be regular roads with single-family houses. It's just going to look, yeah. And it's opening up a thoroughfare.
Okay, and how is the flow of traffic? Well, you, you have an opening for Pine Street and to...
And to Sims.
And to Sims.
Correct.
So people can come in from Sims and Pine. It's a right-in, right-out, left, everything?
Pine?
Pine could make a right-in, right-out, left-in, everything? It's two-way traffic?
It would be a normal...
Yeah, a normal street. And same thing Sims. So technically, trucks could go, come from Pine and go out, the garbage will go out on Sims. Doesn't have to, there's no turnaround needed?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything, we'll come in here, is there any right on that road?
Okay. Anything else on the report that you, that you can agree with?
We only, if you have any problem with any comments on the report, it was the comment that about the addition to the station equation. They recommended a, in addition to the 25-foot buffer that we have along this, this property line, they requested another buffer. I don't see the need for a buffer, a buffer...
Single-family to single-family.
Single-family to single-family. And we were providing a buffer already.
What's normal the buffer required?
There isn't. There isn't. I think, I think the reason there was a buffer required is because this was a townhouse zone. And there, so the last approval, you'll recall, had townhouses in it.
Right.
So from townhouses to single-family, a buffer would be required. This is single-family to single-family. There shouldn't be any buffer required at all, but because the zone requires one, we're actually showing a 25-foot buffer.
Correct.
The shade tree commission recommended now also?
I can clarify, guys.
They requested an additional...
Yes, Terry.
I just want to get on the record.
Yes.
Per our review, the shade tree recommended the following. One was installing evergreen buffering along the east side of the site. Evergreen plant material 6 to 8 feet high installed. That's what you're seeking relief from?
Correct.
Part of it.
Correct.
Okay. And you just gave testimony as to why. Our two is they propose foundation landscape between each unit. You have no problem with that?
Well, that's not a problem.
Okay. Item three, well-awoke, shall be planted spring only unless... Okay, item three, well-awoke, shall be planted spring only unless in containers. That's final. Okay, so the, the only deviation from the Shade Tree recommendations is the evergreen buffering along the east side.
Correct, because we're already providing twenty-five foot buffer, that was part of this, whatever, whatever zones, what was this? It's a Oak Street core neighborhood overlay zone, required a twenty-five foot buffer.
Really, really right, there shouldn't be a buffer necessary at all if it's single-family homes. It's single-family to single-family. The reason there was a buffer required is because this was this neighborhood overlay zone that permitted multifamily, correct.
Terry, you agree with that twenty-five?
This is the recommendation of the commission. They're, they're giving testimony as to why they feel that's excessive.
Okay.
That's obviously up to the board as to whether you agree or not.
Okay. And then twenty-five feet, you're gonna have what, you're gonna have trees?
We're at least twenty-five feet along the east of the property line, existing trees will remain.
Okay.
Existing of.
No problem. Again, to the rest of the report, you agree, have you think?
Correct.
Now, for the rest of the question?
Yes, any question, Mr. Grunberger?
At the entrance to the development, it looks like you're turning the road, you're curving Sims. Why are you turning it, why aren't you keeping it straight?
He testified to meet up with.
On the other side of Pine, is another Peter Street was approved, sent another piece of Sims.
And you want it to.
It should align.
We wanna align artwork, we did this little pinky road to line up with our Sims with the Sims you approved under, under another subdivision application about five years.
Right, so the only thing that I'm questioning is because right next door, it looks like you have another driveway that's very close to the beginning of the entrance to that street.
Well, that, that is, that used to be charity hall avenue, and that piece was approved by the school.
Right, so how far, what's the distance between the entrance of that driveway and the entrance to this street?
About twenty-five to thirty feet.
That's thirty feet.
Now, this is the same location, we're proposing the same, the exact same location as the previous approved by the board.
So, what do you mean, what does it mean also, you're dedicating a part of the property? Another block?
This, we're ending up with this little strip land over here about thirty feet wide.
And that's not too close to the driveway?
Well, no, you're explaining why we're doing, we have about thirty feet of property, about a hundred and fifty feet. We don't need, we're giving it to the school so they can, and they're gonna use it for parking. They, with charity W banking, they need more parking. So, they'll only, they'll provide head-in parking on a piece of property who may be the.
That's not gonna be too close? Means you can have the entrance to your street and the parking is right there, right at the corner? There's no safety issue with that?
I, I'm going by what was approved, by this board, on the last plan.
Yeah, that, those parking, those parking spaces that were granted to that, to that girl school that's over there on the corner, that was on the last plan, this board approved it, you approved it. To give them some more parking. So, we didn't change that.
Any other questions, any board members? Dave, yeah?
What size homes do you expect for our properties?
Glenn, based on the footprint, what size?
I see the lots are between seventy-five hundred and twelve thousand, twelve-eight. Most of them are twelve, there are fourteens. They're all sizes, the smallest.
We just had to say is it, is it thirty by fifty or fifty by thirty? So, the ones that are along Sims, they're, they're fifty feet wide, thirty feet deep on this plan. The ones on the, on the inner circle and that, they're thirty wide houses, fifty.
A typical.
We have to provide, we have to provide a number of architectural plans to the, to the building departments to make sure they're different besides.
What do you expect, twenty-five hundred square foot homes?
Larger, larger.
Well, they're fifteen hundred, they're three thousand square foot homes up to four.
Probably.
How, how much space in the field will be between homes?
Let's see, we have, generally, all homes along, all homes along Sims are seventy-five foot wide lots with fifty-foot house, so you'll have about twenty-five feet between the all-houses in front of Sims. And then you have the, on the, these interior lots, and then inside that loop, there are fifty-foot wide lots and thirty-foot wide house. So, they'll have, they'll have twenty feet between each, you know, ten feet on each side.
Are, do you have a building envelope as far as this plan?
Yes, the building envelopes are shown on.
So, you're not, you're not going up to the setbacks, it's like a design and you're, there's like a community scheme?
Correct, because we're, we're permitted, on the smaller lots, we're permitted five-foot side yard setback.
That's what I mean, you're, you're proposing larger setbacks and that's a condition of your approval.
Correct.
So, you're not, you couldn't sell off a lot?
Not requesting any variances for them.
John, actually, we, we, I think the intention is that we could sell off individual lots. There are building envelopes, there are no variances being requested, we have to stick to the building envelopes. There were sample architecturals that were submitted, but there is the intention that potentially the developer could sell off individual lots.
So, even if a developer were to sell off a lot, that lot would be bound by the envelope that's shown on the plan and that'll be a condition of approval.
Correct.
And, and in many instances, that will be less than the allowed setbacks.
No, because the building envelopes that we showed are precisely the allowed setbacks.
Okay, 'cause I, I think Mr. Garfield's question was what will be the distance between the houses? So, they'll be as per ordinance, they'll meet the setbacks.
Correct, it will be as per ordinance and they'll meet the setbacks, Glenn was just trying to help him by telling him exactly what that would be.
Well, 'cause it sounded to me like, you know, so where there are two five-foot setbacks next, next to each other, it'll only be ten feet between the houses.
No, because there's, there's never a five-foot setback.
I thought you said some of them have five-foot setbacks.
No, ten-foot setbacks.
I, I misheard, I'm sorry.
Ten-foot setback, so there'll be twenty feet between buildings, is what he said.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions, any board members? See now, we'll open it to the public. Anybody from the public that'd like to be heard in this application, please come forward. See now, we'll close it to the public. I would entertain a motion in this application.
We have a motion to approve the application and it's, we approved seventy and now we're coming back to forty-two, so.
Okay, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Harrison seconds, one more question.
Mr. Grunberger. Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hiberson.
Yes.
Mr. Flansmore.
Yes.
Mr. Herschel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner, Mr. Fulmer.
Yes.
Miss Akravas.
Yes.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing an application, you're going down the density. I think by the master plan. By the master plan, we all said we wanna go down in density. Okay, we still have a lot to go. Number nine. Alamed, SB two-two four-four, Karim Maorakhan. Just give Terry a chance.
I'm not enough to notice, plus his beard.
Stay?
And so what? I was pointing at your beard. You've given us inspiration.
Anything we're gonna vote, all right, I'll be ready. Okay, yes, we're ready.
Back on the horse.
Back to work.
Referring to our September twentieth letter. Under submission waivers, we have telco contours and man-made features with, within two hundred feet, which we support. EIS waiver, which we support since there's no environmentally sensitive areas on the property. And this same waiver was granted on prior application, SB twenty-one sixty-two. Tree protection plan, we support granting the submission waiver for completeness only, that if approved, they'll have to document compliance with the tree protection ordinance at time of approval. So, we, we recommend the waivers, that's stated.
Okay, do we have a motion to go? Okay, all in favor? Aye, okay, waiver's gone.
Going on to variances, variances that we understand them include minimum front yard setback, minimum rear yard setback. Testimony regarding parking, we interpret twenty-three required and twenty-six proposed, so that appears to be compliant, but we'll have testimonies indicated in the letter specifically regarding syncope halls and catering. And finally, under perimeter buffer, there's relief necessary from the twenty-foot buffer required.
Thank you, Terry. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, on behalf of the applicant. The board may be familiar with this, this site, this application. We, it's an existing synagogue on the site today. We had come before the board sometime in the last, maybe year or two, and received an approval for an addition. Subsequently, the congregation was able to acquire an additional property and now the, they wanna utilize the property better and they're now looking to actually demolish the existing synagogue and build a brand-new building that is better suited for the needs.
Had an issue with the parking then, with neighbors?
Yeah, it was horrible, it was like gravel.
Correct, it was, it was, yes, and.
Yeah.
Right, so the lot, so this application does a few things. Number one, it gives it a better, a better use of the property. Number two, it's on Miller Road, as everyone knows, it's a fairly heavily trafficked road. It pushes the synagogue off of, it really was up on the street, it pushes it back onto the property to give it a better flow and better use. There were some previous variances, granted, we do, again, we are asking for some of the same variances, but this is a, it changed a little bit, but it's overall a better application and a better use of the property.
And you're not asking for parking variances?
Uh, I don't believe we're asking for, yeah, for, no, there are no parking variances and we'll get to the sync hall, but it's gonna be for Shabbos and, and.
Same exact as it was.
As it was before, correct, it's not. No, it's for Shabbos and Yom Tov. If I can just swear in Brian Flannery this time?
Before I do that, I wanna give an important update. The Yankees took the lead in the bottom, bottom of the eighth, it's four to six.
Oh, nice.
Do you swear a firm testimony before the sport with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner.
John, you're great, you can do two things at once.
I'm no Yankees.
Are you watching this again? I'm sorry, Terry.
We have a motion, you know, for, for an extra bill for Terry, he's doing two jobs. Three jobs.
Three, yes, three jobs, right. Planner, secretary, and engineer, all three, I'm sorry, Terry.
And he's a swell guy. Fourth. The, the application has indicated we're asking for a setback relief for the proposed shul, minimum front yard thirteen point two feet and rear yard setback eleven point six feet, as Adam indicated. The shul is being moved as far away from Miller Road as possible. I have two exhibits marked A1, which shows the shul, it's on the corner of Adams and Miller Road. It's obvious, the board knows all over where it is. A2 is the plan that's submitted and it shows the building. That's the relief and we're doing that to get a, a parking area that accommodates the shul. It's a twenty-nine hundred square foot sanctuary, which requires twenty-three spaces, we're providing twenty-six. The basement, as indicated previously, will have the same restrictions as the last time, so that it, it doesn't create a catering or parking demand. The other comments in Terry's report with respect to the condition of pavement on Adams Street, we would certainly defer to the township engineer if it, on the, on the restoration, so that it's restored properly. The trash obviously will be, require a DPW approval. With respect to the variances, the, it's inherently beneficial use and it serves this community. The building as proposed will adequately house the congregation. The master plan of two thousand and seven for houses of worship, in the case that there's a need and that it is a use that should be encouraged. Same master plan of two thousand and seven on page fifty-six indicates to encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. And it's my testimony that this does this, that this was an existing house on the corner of Adams and Miller that was then used as a shul and then a, a, a regular shul was built. And now what we're doing is actually building a shul that's appropriate for the site. Under the municipal land use law, NJSA forty-four and fifty-five D two, A is encouragement, is selection to guide appropriate use or development of all lands in a manner, which will promote public health, safety, and moral and general welfare. And, and it's my testimony that this does this. We're requesting these are C two variances. They relate to a specific piece of property, this is the unique shul property on a, on a corner, on a county road. The purpose of municipal land use law would be advanced as I testified. These variances can be granted without indetriments for the public good or the intent or purpose of the master plan. Obviously, we've sent notices to the neighbors in the area and the neighbors in the area attend the shul, so it's a shul that benefits.
What's to the right of the synagogue?
To the right?
Yeah.
Or houses, single-family homes. I, I know you, Hootax was right in here and he was one of the guys that called me up and says you need this done, we need, we need the property.
And my, my only question, do you have any buffer over there, any trees?
Well, on this side, we're providing the side setback that's required by ordinance. We would obviously provide a fence and any buffering that the board feels.
You have all the AC units over there, it's gonna be, if I see on the right side.
And, and we do show a fence buffering those AC units. If the board feels another fence along the property.
I don't know about a fence or trees to buffer it.
And obviously, the applicant would provide whatever buffering the board felt was necessary.
You show a, the post is behind a solid vinyl fence.
Correct.
Okay.
Four, I think it's four.
Four foot is around the AC.
It's also four along the front yard setback area, outside of the setback, it's six.
But you show a six-foot fence along that entire side road, so.
What's the propane tank over there?
I assume.
Says propane.
That might be existing.
There's no gas in the area? Oh, is that coming out? That's all gonna be removed? I mean, is there gas in that building? Is there gas in the building?
Yeah, you have to do gas on the street.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no propane tank over there.
Right.
And again, it wasn't all their house, so maybe it's put in the survey, but not mine.
And as part of resolution complaints, we would clear that up with the engineer.
Okay, and where's the garbage room? You have a proposed dumpster? John, does that work, will the trucker come in? On the side of the parking? Yeah? Yeah, my question, how he gets to, they have all the parking? And they could go in between the cars and go head into.
Well, the proposed dumpster, right down the, the aisle, this is showing a loading area.
Yeah, but you have the ramp over there.
You have a ramp. Okay, that ramp, I think it's for the other, yeah, the old building, the old building. Yeah, it's not gonna be, we're not putting any ramp to park.
Oh, could run.
Yeah.
For controlling existing conditions.
The, the, John, if you look on the new building, on the back of the building, you have a new ramp over there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, they are giving a ramp.
Yeah, the, the, the plan was a little confusing, that's the old one.
Oh, hey, hey, you have a new ramp. Do you have a ramp? This ramp has to be removed. Brian, do you agree with everything else in the engineer's report?
Yes.
You could read. Any questions for any board members?
Doesn't have much higher to plan than the old plan now.
Yeah, thank you. More parking. Any, anybody from the public that'd like to be heard in this application, please come forward. See no one, we'll close it to the public. I would entertain a motion.
To approve the application, the same restrictions we have on your other.
For the, for the, for the basis.
The, the shop is only or Yom Tov, weekdays? Okay, so Mr. Fulmer moves, Mr. Flansmore seconds, welcome, please.
Mr. Grunberger.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hiberson.
Yes.
Mr. Haversen.
Yes.
Mr. Flansmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hurst.
Yes.
Mr. Renner, Mr. Forman. Ms. Grappas.
Yes.
And Mr. Garfield.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Only number 10. Who's number 10? SB2277, SCS Cross LLC, is that you? Eight, six eighty-eight, and six seventy-two cross feet.
All right, so SCS is not here?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. We okay? All right, so that's what we're hearing now.
Just one second. Do you need a break? Okay. You're welcome.
I'll be there in a few moments, Chairman.
Chairman, it's time for a break. Is it time to do a break call? Are we okay?
Terry, you're okay, Terry. Are you okay?
Terry's getting paid.
Okay, now.
All right, so we're talking about SB2277.
Mr. Jackson, I cannot stay past nine o'clock tonight. We still have no 25 minutes. Have a dinner tonight for my synagogue. So if someone wants to take over, I would like to finish it.
Let's just move.
Yeah?
Let's just go.
Okay, so number 10. Nine o'clock, unless somebody else wants to take over.
All right. SB2277, going to our letter. There were submission waivers, including flat scale, flat preparation, topography of the site, contours of the site, and location. We're okay with flat scale. We had concerns with regard to the certification of the survey itself.
I think we resolved that.
Okay.
And we'll get to it. I think I resolved.
Okay. Is this chairman a surveyor?
I'm not, no.
Okay.
My surveyor would decide in a way.
Okay. So what the board approved tonight, if approval was granted, you're going to survey. So the waiver is for hearing purposes only.
Correct.
All right. Okay, you're seeking a waiver with respect to topography and contours since you have lot-line justice only, is that correct?
The contours were actually provided on the minor site.
Okay, all right. And then submission waiver with respect to locating septic systems, which we support since there's no building additions, and lot-lines in front of the site would not be altered. And we have a minor site plan for lot 2.03, but not lot 2.04. Talk to us.
I'm sorry.
The minor site plan was submitted for lot 2.03, but not new lot 2.04. I'm reading from our September 20 letter.
We, I'm sorry, I'm looking from the number one. No, we submitted minor site plans.
Okay. So they've been submitted subsequent to this letter?
They've been submitted.
Okay. All right, because, yeah, our most recent letter, September 20. So you submitted that subsequent to our letter. All right, so you're not seeking with the waiver of the minor site plan, and the survey certification is for hearing purposes only, otherwise...
It'll be, it'll be support of waivers.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the waivers to go along with the recommendation from engineer?
Second.
We have one favor?
Aye.
Aye, any names, no? The waivers are granted?
Okay. The site is in the M1 industrial zone. Are you changing any uses with this application?
No, I won't cut you off there. If you want to, you'll cut me off if you feel necessary. I know we're tight on time. This application, as I'm sure everyone knows, Jay's bus site, this is basically the property owners had met, and Jay's looking to expand his office at a certain point. However, at this point, there's no site plan before the board. This is an application for literally moving lot-lines, so that in the event it's approved, they will then, he will then go ahead and have to come back before the board for a new building and a new site plan and everything maybe. We're not creating any new variances. There are no new uses on the site. The site is the site, and the use of the other use is all previously approved. The only thing, like I said, we're doing is literally moving the lot-line, and the lot areas are still very large tracts of land. We're talking about 5.04 acres on one and 6.4, six acres on the other. Nothing else is being proposed here.
They're both vacant, they're vacant as well, but you, what you...
One is vacant, the other one has, is again, Jay's bus, that's where his office is, his building. My understanding is that the property owners had met, made a deal to basically swap some lands, and in the end...
Was it squaring out the property?
It's squaring. That is basically correct. As you can see, if I can just swear in Yodakis this time?
You swear a firm testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you can't, you can't testify. Albert Yodakis, Y-O-D-A-K-I-S, President of Borough Engineering, Old Steck, New Jersey, Licensed Professional Engineer and Planner in the state of New Jersey.
Have you testified to the board from like that?
I have. I've never testified before.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, but I've testified before or represented or been the board engineer in numerous boards in my information account.
The board's definitely... Yeah. Thank you. Al, if you can just walk us through, I guess you highlighted, we can mark this as A1, and just identify this exhibit, and if you can just show the board what is happening.
Just show where you're moving the lot-line over.
Sure. Actually, the board is familiar. Mark Drive, Faraday, it's in the north. This is actually the first application the board saw of this area. What is indicated in yellow here are existing lot-lines, so you have basically existing repagulars running here, and Jay's bus service, which is what's typically referred to as a flag lot. What we're proposing here is the red line, so we will create a lot-line that now goes like this, give this additional repagular piece to Jay's bus service, and take this one piece and add it to this lot here.
And again, we're not creating any new variances. There are a few existing, and that is for, we'll go through it.
Sure. The only existing variances are both lots have variances for lot frontage, and they have variances for front setback and side yard setback. The lot-line change does not change any of those variances or intensify any.
You said it was a flag lot originally?
Yes, as you stated.
Yes, right here.
And now that we're changing, it's not going to be a flag lot anymore?
It will be a flag lot.
It still will be?
It will still be a flag lot. You don't, you do not have a frontage in this case, because there's a raw line right down the middle to create two conforming lots. The frontage just does not exist. So in any case, with two lots here, there's going to be some kind of a frontage variance on one of lots.
And not great, it's still there. It was already there.
It's exactly the same. So could you show me what Jay's is? Jay's is this lot right here. So this is probably familiar with what the board is seeing up front here is their office, their parking, and set-ins back, and actually kind of goes around the corner.
And just to adjust again, I want, but it's important, we don't have, besides that, the size of these lots, anything that you say, you can hump it up on, well, there is a flag lot. We're talking about a five acre plus parcel and a six-plus acre parcel. It's a very...
And you still don't have the frontage.
And we still don't have it. That is correct.
So you said for Jay's acquiring property and just moving the lot-line?
We're moving, they're swapping, we're swapping some lands, and by doing that, we're not creating anything new. Any, and I want to be clear, any change, any use of the property has to come back before the board.
Any building, anything?
Anything.
Anything, okay. Any questions for any board members? The rest of the report, you agree to everything?
The rest of the report, yes.
You agree. Any questions, any board members? Seeing none, we'll open to the public. Anybody from the public would like to be heard? Seeing none?
Motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the second. We'll call. Mr. Flansmore, Mr. Forman, Mr. Flansmore.
Mr. Grunberg.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Haversen.
Yes.
Mr. Flansmore.
Yes.
Mr. Hurst.
Yes.
Mr. Renner, Mr. Forman.
Yes.
Ms. Grappas.
Yes.
And Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Okay. Number 11, SB2250AA, congregation, Hazan of Adyar.
I'm going to recuse myself from this application.
Okay, Mr. Grunberg is stepping down. Who's the attorney on the congregation, Hazan of Adyar? Is that you?
Yep.
Want to summarize, Chairman?
Yes, please.
There are no bulk variances, however, design waivers are required, including site triangle easement, lighting, and landscaping.
This one's...
Good evening. Miriam Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, congregation, Hazan of Adyar. This application is for a site plan exemption, change of use approval, to convert an existing residence into a synagogue. The property is located on Mark Drive at the corner of Pine Street and will be a Sephardic shul. This neighborhood has been developing with more and more families of Sephardic ancestry in recent years, and hence there is need for a synagogue of this genre. The shul will hold all services on Shabbos and Jewish holidays, and for the immediate future, there are no plans to hold weekday services there. There will not be a catering hall. There would be nothing more than a kiddush on Shabbos, but certainly there would be no catering that would bring any vehicular traffic to the site. There are no variances associated with this application, so this is an ad hoc right application that really the board just has to vote in the affirmative on.
You're not, you're not building anything right now?
We're not building anything.
How many parking spaces do you have?
Let me just, let me just, if you don't mind, can we just have Glenn's one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You swear a firm testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Glenn lines, professional engineer, professional planner, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Thank you, Glenn. I trust you're accepting, you're accepting Glenn's credentials, right?
Yeah, we've seen him before.
You've seen him before, okay.
I just, I just looked at the plan, the main sanctuary is 650 square feet.
Sanctuary is 650 square feet. It's a small shul. It's actually, it's a temporary, it's a temporary situation. They are renting the space. They came to the planning board to do this the right way and get it approved, but it really is a temporary situation. They don't even own the property. They just want to have a legal shul where they can pray. There are no variances, like I said.
Do you have any parking on the, on the site?
Yeah, Glenn, how many parking spaces do we have on the site?
You need to have a...
There's four spaces in the existing driveway.
Okay. Leave them as a handicap space.
Less than, or you can, less than 10 spaces, there's no requirement for a handicap.
And if you want to build any building, you have to come back to the board?
That is correct. Correct. This is just a change of use to the existing structure.
And you agree to everything in the report?
We agree to everything in the report.
Okay. Any questions for any board members? Seeing none, we'll open to the public. Yeah, please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Yehuda Gutman. Y-E-H-U-D-A-H-G-U-T-M-A-N.
Please raise your hand to affirm the testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Please just give your address, please.
508 Mark Drive.
Okay, so you live right next to the synagogue?
Two doors down.
Okay. Okay, please proceed.
I would like to first just carry what the council addressed. There are already three smarter shuls in the area, so that the necessity to have another one in this walking distance is questionable. It has been in use already for this purpose. Originally, this house was sold for the purpose of an elder, we were told an elderly woman would be living there, and then it was rented off to the shul without letting the neighbors know. But they were asked that we should not interfere because it would only be on Shabbos and Yom Tov. However, it has been used during the week. They said it would just be used for the Slichos time, because they have Slichos also, and then it was again used for, was used on Purim. There's numerous times that it's been used during the week also. After speaking with the rabbi about this and explaining the changes that have taken place, he has said, well, we need to grow. I know that the legal use is allowed to change from a residence to a shul, but there's a reason why it comes before the board, and that is because our neighborhoods are, if anybody's driven down Pine Street or come down Mark Drive during the day, have become impossible. I have personal difficulty in the mornings getting out from my own driveway. My children work. I have two working children that have complained and asked me to come here tonight, so too my wife, getting the kids off to school. It's important for a person to have a place where he could walk, especially in an Orthodox community, to be able to pray, and I understand that. However, I think it should be known that this group has had the ability to purchase a property across Pine Street in the area where we're not interfering with the, our area, but due to the fact that the rabbi lives on that block and his neighbors weren't are happy, they chose to rent on our block instead. We haven't said anything until now, but now that we got this notice that they want to change it into a shul, and they have this idea that it needs to grow, they do have five years. It's not leased, that's what they say, it's temporarily, they have leased it for five years. Once it becomes a shul, obviously, it's already embarrassing for a Orthodox person to have to stand up and fight against a fellow who also have a necessity to have a shul. But we have really experienced tremendous difficulty because we've gotten notices in our mailboxes that because they have parked over holidays in front of our mailboxes that we will not receive our mail. There have been times during the Slichos period where people did not put out their garbages at night, were not able to put them on the curb in the morning when they had to leave because cars were already parked there. That which they say they have four spots, there are two paved, and there's two really on the grassy area that was used by the previous owner. I'm not sure what maximum capacity for a shul of that size is, but there are many people that come and go. I know our neighbors have had children playing on their, in their backyards during the, during the services. We've had problems with our mail, our garbages, our children have had issues with the children in the shul. Our quality of life has not been the same since it's there. I tried to negotiate personally with the rabbi himself. He was very kind, but not budging in his insistence that his shul needs to grow. He didn't put the shul on his own block for a very good reason. I wish that the board would see fit, that the same reason why he wouldn't want to have it on his block, he shouldn't be allowed to put it on ours, you need to change it to a shul, and there must be a reason for that. I would appreciate if you would take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weinstein, anybody else in the public would like to be heard? Seeing no one, we'll close it to the public. But what's the occupant load on this shul? It says 100 occupants on the first one, but 650...
Glenn, what's the maximum number of occupants?
Code compliance data, I'm reading on the first page.
Is that on the architecture part?
I don't know. What does that mean?
I guess it's would be based on the total square footage of the building.
On 650, you're not, you're not putting in 100 people in 650 square foot?
Correct. They take the area of the building, and it's based on how big the doors are. How many, how many people could be in the building if you get to try to get out through a certain sized door? And that gives you a number. So based on this sized building, they, you know, building code says 100 people could be in. That's as much as I know about building.
The way I said, you're limiting it to 650 square foot.
On 650, you're not putting in 100 people in 650 square foot?
Correct. They take the area of the building and it's based on how big the doors are. How many people could be in the building if you can't just park, take it out through a certain sized door, and that gives you a number. So based on this sized building, you know, building code says 100 people could be in. That's as much as I know about building numbers.
The way I said, you're limiting it to 650 square foot. If anything changes, you want to build, you have to come back to the board.
Correct.
And I think the rabbi has to really reach out to his congregants and make sure this doesn't happen. They block people's driveways.
Agreed.
And stuff like that. This is an ongoing problem we have, and it's an absolute disgrace that we have to deal with stuff like this.
Agreed, and I will definitely tell him, I think, I think he's not here because I told him that in my likelihood it wouldn't be heard because it was number 11, so.
And also, I mean, he's saying that they use it during the week, and you're saying he's not going to use it.
So he's, I had the discussion with him, he's not here, but I had a discussion with him about it today. I just, yeah, sure.
Can I finish? I just, I just want to finish. I don't want to have an argument. He said they use it during Slichas.
Right.
That means they use it since Rosh Chodesh Ello until Rosh Shana. They use it for one month during the week, every single day. That's, you're saying they're not going to do that, so I just wanted to be clear that they're not going to do that. That's all.
I think that, I just, I just want to make one thing clear. We're not agreeing to any kind of restriction in the resolution that they're not, that they're only going to use it on Chavess and Yom Tov. We know what happens when we put that in, we'll be back here in a year like we were on the last one fighting with all the neighbors. A different neighbor, actually a next door neighbor, who also, I don't see him, I told him to come or to text me to find out exactly where they're up to on the agenda. I don't see him, I did speak to him today, told him the same thing. Yeah, the neighbors, I know this is hearsay, I'm just letting the board know. The neighbors did reach out to us, I did speak to him, I told him I'm not putting any restriction in the resolution. It doesn't work, we've tried it before in other shuls. I did speak to the rabbi, explained to him that, you know, if he promised the neighbors that he's going to use it mainly for Chavess and Yom Tov, which I think is what he told the neighbors, which means that most probably next year when it comes, sorry to do this to you, but the Slichas time again, which Mr. Flanspoon aptly pointed out, the Sephardim say Slichas for a lot longer than the Ashkenazim do. So it's about a 40-day period, they probably did save there. I don't know. That's why I'm not putting in the.
But I do think what Mr. Fulmer said, you have to speak to the rabbi, make sure any one of the congregants cannot block anybody's driveways.
The board puts the restrictions on, though, not the applicant. If you want to put restrictions on, that's fair game.
But it's a variance-free application, Mr. Jackson.
Nevertheless, there's a site plan and there's concerns by the neighbor. If the restrictions are reasonably tailored to allay what the issues are, then I think they're enforceable.
I think you told us last time, or Ellie said, that you can't restrict, if it's illegal.
No, I respectfully have a position where if it's rational, it's not arbitrary. It's based on, you know, sound judgment, the conditions of the site, the conditions of the neighborhood. You're not prohibiting their use, you're just saying that there are certain limitations based on the constraints of the site and the condition of the neighborhood. And I think it is within the board's authority to do that, as long as it's something that's just arbitrary, you're just not making it up out of thin air.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, if I could make the recommendation, I know the last time we had a very similar situation with a different synagogue.
I know.
The rabbi posted a notice in the shul and he sent out notices to all his congregants asking them not to park, blocking driveways or blocking mailboxes. I think that that's a very fair and valid request and we should make, that would be a condition that would make sense to have such a letter posted, both in the synagogue and to ask the rabbi to send out those notices to his congregants. It's true, it's unfair of them to block driveways and mailboxes if they use it during the week. I just, it's not fair, it's terrible. It's terrible, I agree. None of us would want to live next door, to myself included. It's terrible, it's horrible.
There's two parking places, one on gravel. There's no site plan here, so you can see how she lives.
It's asphalt, I believe, Mr. Franklin, but I'll let Mr. Lyons give the testimony.
There's an evil drive, which is 36 feet long, with 54 cars. So, from the assessment, it sounds like they're parking two cars in the driveway and two on lawn.
Right. That's what they're saying, is that what happened?
Well, right now there are no weekday services, but there are, there were weekday services during that holiday season. That'll probably happen again next year, I'm guessing, which is why I'm suggesting that certainly the congregants have to be made aware that it's unacceptable behavior. A letter has to be sent out to all of them that they cannot park on the grass or blocking, certainly not blocking people's mailboxes and people's driveways. If they want to have services there during the week and there is not ample parking, they have to walk.
Can you reasonably put a few more parking places?
Glenn, can we put any more parking? Is there any more parking we could get?
Have you paved the grassy area, what would be the maximum?
We would probably get two more parking spaces, you know, without having to open up the driveway on Mark Drive anyway.
That would help the situation.
Where are you talking about putting those, Glenn?
On the market?
To either side of the existing driveway.
So you're going to use the main driveway as a standard, Glenn, and then on each side?
Yes.
Okay.
So where it says papers on the right side of the driveway, you can take one, and on the other side where it says concrete, you can take the side, roll over the side corner, people are there. At least there's four off-street parking spaces.
Then you, you would pay them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then a motion, remember, I'd like to make a motion to this application.
It's a fully conforming application with no variances, so I don't think, you know, we really don't have a, we really don't have any options, so, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the application, I just.
I have a recommendation that the rabbi.
You know, please, you know, just be nice to the neighbor. Yeah, and with John's suggestion about the traditional parking spaces.
But you have sidewalks there, right?
Yes. Sidewalks in front of the house.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
Now, anybody should feel free to call the cops and take it down if they are lying.
Oh, please call the cops, take it down. Should that be the resolution?
I would too. I would.
I'd call the cops. I'd call the cops. Okay, that's my motion with the additions.
Mr. Fulmer seconds with that addition. Okay, roll the call.
Mr. Grumburger, Mr. Frank, Mr. Hibbers, Mr. Flanspoon, Mr. Hersel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner, Mr. Fulmer, Ms. Grubbs, and Mr. Barkin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know you'd indicate that you had to be somewhat, the next application, a man's livelihood for a building that burned down, he's trying to put back his store so he can get back to work. It's a fairly quick application. No, the next application, Bailey. I know, I do understand, I just put that to the board if you don't mind. Again, this is his story.
Mr. Gilligan has also been standing here, hands folded. Waiting patiently.
Mr. Jackson, I'm leaving, Mr. Franklin will take over the last two applications, so we'll finish it tonight.
I appreciate that.
Only because you like the beer.
Hmm?
Only because of the beer.
Alan, you said?
There's a box over here with the miles that I signed back here.
Okay. Did you read it for me? I did not, no. There are miles that you've signed, Chairman?
Yes.
All right, what I'm going to do is, that cart is what they take everything upstairs with. I'll move those to the cart.
I'll take four. Water jugs, clear with ice.
Yeah. No, you're not getting the ice. Where is it?
Justin moved it already.
2251.
Poor Adam does the things that someone else.
All right.
The Yankees want to get anyone feel better.
May I summarize the application?
Item number 12.
Okay, this is SP 2251.
2251.
Okay. Under submission waivers, we have traffic study, topo contours, mammary features within torn feet, EIS, and design calculations for drainage. Waiver's been requested from the traffic study, can we have testimony as to why? Pardon me? Sergeant Gilligan. G-I-L-L-I-G-A-N. Mr. Gilligan, please raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that testimony we'll give before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I do. Licensed professional engineer and planner? I am a licensed engineer in New Jersey and also a licensed planner in New Jersey. You can't get some of your credentials. I think the board will recognize in case of necessary. Actually, I haven't been before this board in a while, but I have been before Lakewood Board. I've testified before just about every municipality in Momma and the Ocean County.
Okay, proceed.
And the board accepts this testimony. So the waiver request is for a waiver of the traffic study? Because. This is an existing structure that was destroyed by fire and basically we're at the same type of uses going on. Are you changing the infillations? We are increasing the square footage of the building for. So that the waiver of the traffic study is obviously up to the board. There's one other technical waiver request for proposed drainage. Yeah, actually, we are decreasing the impervious cover on site. We have offered some drainage that mitigates some of the drainage going onto the adjacent property. That is the present condition, and it can still go in that direction. So we're trying to mitigate a little bit by putting an infiltration plate on the applicant's property. Okay, and if the board acts favorably on this application, you'll work with the jury of compliance to make sure. I will, yes. Thank you. We have no objections with the possible exception of the traffic report, which we'll defer to the board. You're just a submission waiver.
Yeah, on the submission waiver, you're just adding a couple of square footage up there. It's kind of minor, going to have units upstairs to rent out for office.
There were units there before, we'll get that testimony. There were units before, we're adding, we are adding some square footage. I hope we, we'll get testimony to why we're improving the site.
So you're taking the liquor store that was there, you're upgrading it, and you're going to have now a little more office space upstairs.
That's correct.
So is the board, is the board okay with waiving the traffic in this circumstance? You're on Route 88, right?
Yeah, yes.
What's the feeling of the board?
No problem.
Okay, no problem, go ahead.
Thank you. And then moving on under zoning, new bulk variance relief includes minimum front yard setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback. There was discussion at the tech meeting as to whether there was the possibility of blocking adjacent properties.
No, I researched that, that's not necessarily on a commercial property, that's only for a single-family home.
Okay. All right. We, per our review of parking, the UDO requires 37 spaces, they're proposing 15. Again, this is a pre-existing use, if you can give testimony to the board as to why.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Tafferty, on behalf of the applicant. As you can see, Mr. Bailey is here, he's been here since, I believe, 5:59 this evening, as this is really his livelihood. He's owned the building and the liquor store for, since about 1991. Previously, historically, that, he was the third owner of the liquor store. I'd been there, I was born in Lakewood in 1980 and I know there was a liquor store there. It's been there for.
You were born in there? That's it, 1980 or so.
It's a beard. And as far as I can remember, there's been a liquor store there. It was really, has grown with that store. He actually indicated to me that he got married in this room in Lakewood. He lives in Lakewood, he really loves Lakewood, and he serves a need for the downtown. Unfortunately, there was a fire recently there, and that's why we went back before the board with this application. The application does include some variances, which Terry had read. There is an existing variance, existing condition for minimum mod area. The site is just shy of 15,000 square feet and requires 20,000, again, that is what it is. The minimum front yard setback is 25, we're proposing 19.75. The previous building that burnt down was 23 point, 22.38 approximately. We're asking for minimum side yard setback, 10 feet, I'm sorry, 3.1 feet, 3.1 feet, or 10 feet is required. The previous one was 15.1. The minimum rear yard setback, it requires 30 feet, and we propose 12.89, which is basically what the previous, the previous building had. I know the question I've been asked about the parking variance. Now, historically, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bailey's customers are in the store for approximately seven or eight minutes. They mostly are walk-in business.
They sit there, they sit and be treated.
But they're not coming with cars. They are, they're mostly walk-in business, and I can, I will at one point swear, Mr. Bailey, that that is the case. Approximately, almost 80% of his business is walk-in. Now, the building just next door to him, which is a grocery store in downtown, which has no parking, what tends to happen at the time is that those customers are actually not going to the store, using his parking lot, and then basically leaving. So his store, his only time his parking lot ever filled up was with customers from next door. So what we've done in this application, and we'll give the testimony in a minute, we've shifted the side of the building. So whereas it used to be grocery store, parking, and then the liquor store, we've now shifted, we flipped it over. So the liquor store is now next to grocery store, so that people who can't just go into, can't park, really, they have to walk past the store to go into the grocery store. With that, we have, we have.
I think that's going to stop them.
The families can stop them.
It is going to. It is going to, yeah, the use of the property currently, we never really had a problem with parking on the site. We'll give that testimony regarding that. Just walking through the rest of it. We are proposing second floor of our office spaces. There was a previous application going back somewhere around 2005, Mr. Bailey came in and asked to add some office space upstairs. It was permitted, with again the same amount of parking. And those, you know, those uses, the same tenants coming back, they're a single owner, one person, store one's like a travel agent who does stuff online, one person, another one who sells also some kind of online customers. They don't do any retail coming into their office, they don't have meetings or anything like that. Some of the square footage that we're actually adding to the site is in storage. So while the main, the main facility of the actual liquor store is only increasing a small percentage of the actual usable space, the rest of it's really going to be in storage. One of the other things I wanted to point out was with regard to the deliveries. The main, the first thing I asked is how do the trucks come in, how do they deliver, and how is it going to change? By moving the site from one side of the property to the other, we now have enough room for a K-turn to happen for the trucks if they do come in, for the deliveries. Currently, they come in and they basically pull in and half on, half off Route 88, and it's early in the morning, but with this, they now pull directly into the site and make the deliveries.
How are they going to make the K-turn?
If I kind of have my engineer just go over that. There is room in the back here where we, and again, the deliveries will happen prior to the store being opened. But go down toward the back and there's asphalt will be.
Well, you've got two employees already parking in the back.
Yes, but the deliveries will be coming before the store starts opening up.
Before employees?
Yes, it's well-employed, but you know, they could park it.
Right, you have another problem with the parking lot. Your parking lot should be 28-foot and 20-foot. You're short three foot in your turnaround area, and you're short a foot in your parking area. It's going to be a tough parking lot for the customers to pull in and back out.
No, we have a 46-foot aisle.
It's supposed to be 28-foot.
I believe 25 is what is required. Actually, it was suggested in an engineer's letter to reduce that 26 feet.
Is that right?
The 25 is a minimum.
That's a move.
For two-way. Which is what we have.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, if it were residential, if it was our site, it would be 28, but this is commercial, so that doesn't apply. Typically, a two-way minimum mile width, non-residential is 25 feet, it's common.
So we don't have the large 18-wheeler trucks coming in to make the deliveries. There are smaller trucks, we get deliveries, we, pretty local, the delivery companies, so we get a pretty frequent of the smaller trucks.
Just walking through the letter. Yeah, there is, that's page 4. Mr. Gilligan, how will the deliveries work? I'm sorry? How will the deliveries work? Deliveries work, a typical beer truck comes, it's not like a tractor trailer. And I discussed it with Mr. Bailey. The beer trucks have two sides that they can unload from. And depending on what load, what size that load is on, they will maybe back off of 88 or pull right in off of 88 and put the correct side closest to the. So they'll pull in the parking lot and then either have to unload and back out, so you'll try to do that during off-peak hours? Yes, actually, if they're going to, if they're going to unload to the side to where the truck is facing inward, they would just pull right in and go back and do the K-turn. If they have the delivery on the opposite side, they would back in off of 88. And you think, how long does it take to do that type of delivery? I mean, it sounds like you're unloading an 18-wheeler, right? Do you do that during off-peak business times? Yes.
Yes, historically, right now, it would be somewhere around 8:00 to 3:00, and then the buyer to the store, you know, the store, which is closer to them.
Now, the traffic there on 88, that's not like high speed right in that area? 35 miles an hour.
And right now, what's happening is they're coming up, they're no, they're not going to the parking lot at all. They're just basically, they're basically double park.
I've seen it, they pull up along 88, like half on and the sides off, half off.
And it works, right?
And this is, this is all improving, it's paying off of the shul. Um, there is an existing, um, uh, sign on, on the property and we are asking for an area that's on.
Let's see the schematic of the second floor. You know, you have, the, the, the first floor is all for the liquor stores.
Right, about fifteen hundred square foot of actual retail, the rest is small office and a bathroom, and the rest is storage.
Um... So you have all your racks and everything, and then the second story, how are the, uh, office units up there? Just describe them.
Brian, do you want to?
Okay, swear my architect.
Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm testimony to give before the board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Sorry, your name?
Brian Brzynski.
And you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Is that good enough? He's a licensed architect? Do you go along to this information?
Good.
All right, go ahead. Wanted to show us the layout of the second floor.
So the second floor has three separate units. One towards the back and two towards the front. There are three separate staircases and they're sharing a community bathrooms for his and her, so they're all on this.
How, how many people you think that could accommodate?
Well, each, each unit is around twelve hundred square feet.
But the rep, relative to small units.
Yeah.
So that would help supplement the, uh, vitality of the...
Sure.
That's another source of income and that would help the whole thing work.
Correct, and currently, just to repeat, um, prior to the fire, there were two tenants, those same tenants are coming back. They're single, uh, personal offices, uh, single-person businesses, uh, and just getting really one additional store, um, office space up there.
Okay, Mr. Gilligan, you think this whole site works? Is there enough parking? Can the trucks and everything start to lay and all that?
Yes, again, this is a, uh, has had, has a history behind it and almost the same exact uses. So, and it worked before, uh, I think it'll work actually a little better now.
So you get a new upgraded, nicer building, better parking lot layout, and you're picking up a little bit more square footage on the second story.
Yeah, picking up some square footage, uh, you know, ju, if you look at the, the second floor, there are two significant stairwells that are required for, for safety. And, and they take up a large portion of the second floor.
You know, I don't want to just get right to the point, but does the board need any more information or get the idea?
So, sir?
Could you bring the sample?
No, we, we're on the other side, I just want to ask you, it's very, um... Yeah, we're going to, or, so we may need an agreement with the official landlord, uh, there's a common thirteen on basic. And then we've been repeating, seeing, beyond, um, uh, the way is, is in the improvement, so the bar office is going to be less than... If you can prove to us during compliance that there are no impacts and no interference necessary, that's fine.
And I want to know who's smoking, fixing. Does that get handled there?
All right, if, anyone from the public that should be heard on this application? Close it to the public. Tell me what's your...
I'd like to make a motion that this man's business, if that had been discussed, and... Wait a second.
Yes.
Seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hivers.
Yes.
There would be here, um... Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes, and good luck.
Mr. Hersel, Mr. Renner, Mr. Fulman.
Yep.
Ms. Gruffus.
Yes.
And Mr. Gorkas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
High, high.
Are we done, Chairman Franklin?
Yes.
Or the next application?
I guess we're not.
Twenty-two fifty-three A-A.
Good luck.
Want to summarize the variance application or the application? Uh, looking at our letter, we have no submission waivers, uh, perimeter buffer relief is necessary, uh, and design waivers are required for onsite lighting and onsite lighting. Flannery, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm testimony to give before the board with the truth, the whole truth?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Has indicated this is an application for site plan exemption, uh, slash change of use. What was approved by this board two years ago was a duplex on a, the corner of this newly formed street, Oak Street. The, uh, rabbi from the shul across the street, Sherwood Forest, said that they should have a shul on their own side of the street. So the, the developer of this property is taking away two basements from these units and there'll be a shul in the basement. So the shul has no basement. It is in the basement. Uh, it's a eight-hundred-square-foot sanctuary, so it needs no parking. The, there will be four parking spaces provided, which accommodated for the parking of the units and the basement. And now we, we don't have the basement, so even though no parking is required, virtually, we're providing four parking spaces. It's a neighborhood shul. It's on Oak Street, which, uh, uh, you know, doesn't have some of the congestion problems that, that the board has, uh, seen on other applications. The relief that we're asking for is a perimeter buffer, uh, to, to the side yards. Uh, this is to the residents that are living there, uh, and it's my testimony that it's a good application and, and the board should approve it. That Terry's comment, he asks, are there any other ancillary uses? And the answer is no. It's, it's a neighborhood shul, um, the, the parking I've addressed. Uh, and as he indicates in C, we're reducing the, the residential parking demand and, and the, uh, and, and the number of residential units. So we're recruit, we're reducing density, which I know is what this board likes to see. Um, uh, and, um, it, it will be ADA accessible.
Okay. Board have any questions on this?
He was, he was just here, right?
It was two years ago. It seems like just here. I, I have an additional eighty gray hairs. I'm not getting any more now.
That's a beard, isn't it?
I'm not getting any more. I'm losing them now.
No question on it, then we have a motion?
Second.
Motion second?
Open to the public?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, open to the public. You didn't see much of the public.
See, none.
Okay, close it to the public. Okay, we got a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Grunberg, Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hivers.
Yes.
Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Hersel, Mr. Renner, Mr. Fulman.
Yes.
Ms. Gruffus.
Yes.
And Mr. Gorkas.
Yes.
What application left?
Twenty-two fifty-three A-A.
Why not?
Thank you.
So you can use placement? I could summarize this, Chairman. Um, the application requires perimeter buffer relief, uh, with regard to the side area, real on property lines, and design waivers, uh, including but not limited to curving the sidewalk on the property frontage, uh, paved carways, paved on-street access, uh, on-street parking, shaped for utility easements, shaped for his way and landscaping. Um, as Brian, I'm sure, is going to testify, this is, uh, somewhat a unique situation. Uh, this property is off of the beaten track path, uh, west of Massachusetts. Uh, I believe it's between an existing water tower, uh, and an existing solar field. Is that correct?
Yes.
So not your typical neighborhood school. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Tom Ferbton, of the applicant, up against where, Brian Flannery? Swear or affirm testimony to give before, before we put out your...
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. This is another site plan exemption application. It, it's kind of a hard-luck story where a school thought they were moving into one facility, which got taken away from them. Uh, and it's, uh, it's a post-high school. Uh, they have a maximum of forty-eight, uh, boys that are not all there at the same time, five staff that's not up there all the time. This will accommodate them on a temporary basis. We're asking for a maximum of twenty-four months. Uh, the site as it is works now and, and we'll address any comments Terry has to report.
This, this site's kind of off on its own, if I remember from the TRC, right?
Yes, it is.
It's by an old shooting range. It's surrounded by woods.
Yes, yes.
And there's no residences nearby.
Yes, correct.
You're not going to bother anyone.
They, they, you really have to try hard to find them. I, I drove by it a couple of times and then I said, I'm going to find this and, and, and I worked that and I found it.
And you're asking for a maximum of twenty-four months?
Twenty-four months, correct.
And Brian, Mr. Flanshaw, confirm. Uh, we have no objections to Terry's comment.
Correct.
October eleventh, uh...
Correct.
All right, anyone have any questions? Open it to the public. Close it to the public. We have a motion.
I'll move to approve the, uh, the application.
Second.
Motion approved. Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grunberg, Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Hivers.
Yes.
Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Hersel, Mr. Renner, Mr. Fulman.
Yes.
Ms. Gruffus.
Yes.
And Mr. Gorkas.
Yes.
The last item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, was public comment. And I had a client that asked me to read let, a letter that was submitted. It'll take me thirty seconds to read it and then I don't have to talk to her anymore. It was from Ms. Laurie Leeds. Thank you, thank you very much. This is block nine thirty-one, lot one, and it, it's near the, uh, Cedar Bridge Development Area, but it's away from it. It's on the corner of Vine Street and Cedar Bridge Avenue. It's in the DA one zone, but it's not part of the Cedar Bridge Development. So she asked me to write a letter. My client, Laurie Leeds, testified at the public input meeting with reference to the subject plot. The master plan depicts this property on the existing proposed land use as being DA one zoning district. The zoning district labeled Cedar Bridge redevelopment. My property is not associated with Cedar Bridge Development Area. I'm requesting clarification added to the master plan or some other official document to confirm the subject property can be developed independently of the Cedar Bridge Development Area in accordance with the DA one zoning requirements listed in section eighteen nine oh three of the Unified Development Orders and that the subject property is in the suburban planning area, PA two, as depicted in the master plan. Thank you.
And do it.
And she said she needed that on the record so that she wouldn't have to sue because the town was trying to take something away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Aaron Hirsch. Um, I'm, I wanted to talk about briefly about, uh, since you guys still know the master plan. Um, was brought up at the last meeting, um, that the board does not want to approve anything on the south side of town under R-twelve. Um, there are some zones that are B five A, which are being, being switched to that, um, that would fall under the R-twelve criteria, which was... The planner said there was nothing else for under R-twelve, but that particularly allows seventeen units per acre.
But those were pieces fronting along Route seventy. Those we talked about at the hearing, so...
But he said it wasn't switched. He said it was, it was existing. That's what he said.
No, but they were switching the actual zone.
That's what he said. I guess he doesn't consider it. And he told me that there was nothing being switched to that zone. It was that zone already.
Right.
That's not the map that you guys got, got the last time it was being switched from five to five A, which is a conditional use, uh, permissible use, um, conditional to, to seventeen units per...
My thinking, right, it's pieces along Route seventy, along the Route seventy frontage, but you, you can't, you can't generalize the south side of town and then throw Route seventy...
Well, it's, it goes on the Chestnut too. That's the big problem. We have massive traffic issue.
You can't talk about Route seventy as the south side of town and compare that to Cross Street, uh, which is what you're doing.
Well, we're talking, goes on the Chestnut. That's the problem. It comes on the Chestnut, between seventy and Chestnut. And coming on Chestnut and we are at minimum, the county says, two years for traffic. We're talking probably a lot more than that because they got to go into the state. So Chestnut is a mess here. Coming down, it's down to an accident at Chestnut, New Hampshire. I mean, it's a disaster. There's not a day or two that goes by without an accident there.
Okay.
Now, how do you check that? That's, I want to make sure that...
I guess we got to look at the map?
You got to make sure that that's coming through. It's not, it wasn't changed to that density.
You don't have to pull up the map now. We'll, we'll check that out.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, what?
Anything else?
Well, I just want to make sure that, that you guys may be perhaps verified that any change that'll happen, whether it's highway or not, it should not be going below the twel, R-twelve that you guys request. You all didn't want to have, approve anything on the R-twelve over there. And Chestnut is becoming, has become a major problem. So I'm requesting that you could request in the planner to equivalent of R-twelve, what is being changed, the equivalent of lower than R-twelve. If you, please get that like this, you could do a proper, a proper, uh, change.
Seeing no, well, no one else. Seeing no one else.
Thank you.
Okay, well, approve the minutes of, uh, September the twelfth and September the nineteenth. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion second. All in favor? All right, approve bills?
Both.
Proved the second. All in favor? Adjourned? Oh.
Thank you.